Okay, great. Thank you so much. I want to call to order the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Deschutes County, Wednesday, September 30th, 2020. Let's please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I do have one letter which I wanted to make acknowledge as far as citizen input goes. It's regarding wetland preservation and concerning preserving the wetlands within our community of the Deschutes River Woods Recreation Home Site 6. And we will be, the county commissioners will be discussing that later. So I do want to acknowledge the letter from Mel and Eileen Mills. So thank you very much for that letter today. Are there any other comments this morning?
Well, as you know, the water issues and drought and planning for the future of the water and surface water and groundwater has been a big issue. We did get a letter from the Tumalo Irrigation District that was kind of interesting because it kind of laid out that their good news was they were not going to run out of water. And they give us some advice on what to do. And it's good to hear from the irrigation district specifically like this. I'm always glad. It'd be nice, actually, if we could get one from every district. And it's definitely something on everybody's mind now is water and the issues. I think there's been a lot of confusion over the surface water versus the groundwater issues and what, you know, why one system is down and another isn't. But it's good to get those.
And I think there are district reports to patrons for every district. So, yeah, we don't see them manually, but, I mean, that may be interesting to take a moment and just kind of gather the other districts' reports to their patrons.
Yeah, that might be interesting to kind of do it in a one-shot deal, kind of water report or water, you know, update, what to look for in the next year, you know, how much are we depending on the snowpack, what's, which systems are doing what?
What does the farmer's almanac say about the snowpack?
You'll have to bring yours in.
I'll bring mine.
Think of the winter we're going to have, yeah.
Yeah, what kind of winter are we going to have? How early is it going to start? And yes, and is it going to snow in the right spots? So.
Following the science.
Just one other note, so under other items today, the Facility Review Committee, there was a memo put out. So if, and I didn't bring my binder, but we could do it this afternoon just to make sure we're on the same page, you know, just as another item at the end of the meeting.
Yes. That'd be great. Yes, I actually thought of that as I was driving in because I remember the Arnold Wander was shut off August 15th. And yet, this morning, coming in on Highway 20, there was an enormous sprinkler system irrigating of, no, actually, it must be a grass, it's orchard, I believe, that I was driving by. So there's still watering, and I believe my neighbors got three cuttings. So, and I believe someone down in Lone Pine did get three cuttings, even though that water district was shut off for the first time in 43 years. So, you know, our farmers, they have to manage, they have to manage so carefully, and I know it's not easy, so.
Well, it's, you know, from my observations in the desert, the, this is the longest I've ever seen the fescue grass in 22 years. So there was enough water early in the year, this is all naturally growing, to get a first crop, so to speak, up, and pretty plentiful. And we had about four months of no rain, but.
And I know from experience in Southern Deschutes County, 50-icke field that I've been cutting for many years, that, yeah, just one or two natural rain events in June or so really makes a difference, no matter how much irrigation water you put down.
Yeah, that's right.
It does help, doesn't it?
Well, it just pops, I mean, it just boosts the growth.
I know. I mean, it's such a difference when rainwater versus irrigation. You just see the difference. It's unbelievable, I know. I see it in my fields. So, thank you very much for joining us today. We do have a consent agenda.
I have no questions about it.
Would you like to make a motion then?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
And I will second it.
Further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
Mr. DeBohn?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we will go on to action item. We need to convene as the governing body of the Sun River Service District. And our first item is consideration of board signature to thank Jim Pfister of the Sun River Service District Managing Board. He is leaving his service. So, is there any kind of motion on that?
So just, yeah, the letter says to Jim Pfister, but it says to your Ron.
I've already got that.
Yeah, good, okay.
I've already got that corrected.
Make sure the one we sign doesn't say that.
I know.
Any feedback on that? He was a pretty valuable member, I thought, of that committee, is he?
Yeah, I would definitely want to thank Jim Pfister, you know, resident of the area. You know, when somebody has their home there and they retire full-time there and then get involved, just really appreciate, because he'll understand, he'll have the deep knowledge of the district, be able to tell his friends and neighbors, and understand what's going on in the district. So it's always valuable to have the community members be involved in those committees. We definitely want to thank Jim Pfister. And then welcome Jackie Schmidt. So I know that Jackie's husband, Ron, is the person that was on there also. So it sounds like a wife's taking over for a husband on a CD there. Unless they're both going to be on for a while, I'm not sure if they are.
Okay.
With that, I'll move approval of item number one and two for Sun River. Consideration of board signature thanking Jim Pfister and consideration of board signature to appoint Jackie Schmidt to the Sun River Service District.
And I'll second that.
Further discussion? Commissioner DeBohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. I would now like to reconvene as the governing body of Deschutes County. Item number one is a public hearing, consideration of resolution number 2020-061, approving issuance of hospital revenue bonds by Hospital Facility Authority of Deschutes County. Greg, do you want to open this up?
You bet. Greg Munn, CFO, Deschutes County. On Monday's board agenda, there was an item to present to the board an overview of Deschutes County Hospital Facility Authority, including a proposal to, for the authority to issue debt in the amount of 100, not to exceed $120 million, that would go to benefit the facilities at St. Charles. Jen Wheeler did an excellent job of providing that overview. And as we mentioned on Monday, the plan for that is to come back today, which is this agenda item here, which is a public hearing to consider that, that proposal, and for the board to approve the resolution number 2020-061, authorizing that bond issue. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Adair to address, to open the public meeting.
Yes, I would like to open the public meeting. And first, I would like to ask Mr. Blonde, Greg, do you have that 800 number that is available to the public, just so that I can actually say it aloud, too? Is he available, Greg Blonde?
I do. Let me, I'll pull that up real quick. I didn't have that handy.
I just thought it would be appropriate.
Yeah, so the number is 1-877-211-3621.
Okay, great.
And, yep, thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, as, I'm actually the chair of the Hospital Facility Authority of Deschutes County. So, this public hearing is being held for the purpose of hearing public comment on a request by St. Charles Health System to the Hospital Facility Authority of Deschutes County, Oregon, to issue its revenue bonds in one or more series pursuant to a plan of finance in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $120 million. The proceeds of the bonds are expected to be used by St. Charles for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of capital construction, acquisition, development, improvements, renovations, and equipment for medical hospital and healthcare facilities located in Deschutes County. St. Charles is the owner of the bond financed projects. In accordance with federal tax law that applies to this type of hearing, a toll-free number for this hearing has been provided to the public, as which we just did. This public hearing is being held by the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners on Wednesday, September 30th, 2020, and is hereby opened. I understand that Greg Blonde, Bond Counsel to the Hospital Facility Authority, is monitoring the toll-free number that has been provided to the public. Mr. Blonde, are there any members of the public on the toll-free line that wish to express their views regarding the issuance of the bonds and the uses and purposes of the bonds?
I've been monitoring the toll-free line, and there are, nobody has dialed in.
No one, okay. And we did, we did just give it to him also just a minute ago, so that's, that's excellent. So, we're seeing none? There are still none? All right?
Correct.
Okay. The public hearing with respect to the bonds is now closed.
Now, it is just 10:10.
What does it say on our calendar? 10:10.
So someone called in.
We could take a moment.
Yes, we could take a moment. How, we could talk about how important St. Charles is to our community, as the rural hospital of our tri-county region, actually serving a lot of eastern Oregon in addition to the three counties here.
Let's just take a moment and review. So there's, this is a public hearing on the matter, and there is a toll-free phone number to be able to dial to make a comment. So I'll repeat the number just since it is 10:10. 877-211-3621, if anybody would like to comment during this public hearing period on the subject.
So, are we going to have any presentation by the hospital beyond what happened on Monday, or?
No, I don't believe so.
Well, maybe I have a question for one of you then, because I missed a little bit of the prep when I was trying to call in the other day. What is, does, I didn't really know if, what went into the $120 million, and if that's a, maybe Commissioner Adair, you know that from being on the committee, but is there just a list of projects they want to do?
Right, yes.
And?
Do you want me to give you the?
Does anybody, I mean, is it just, could it have been 500 million? I mean, who, who decides whether the list is reasonable? Is it the big committee, or?
Well, Jen Wheeler.
This is Jen Wheeler.
Yeah. She's ready. Would you like to step up and give Commissioner Henderson a bit more detail? I do have a copy of what exactly you're doing, Redmond, all this. It's a pretty, my printer is not working right, but it's there.
So the list of projects was included in the work session materials for Monday, and it includes an expansion of ambulatory services in Redmond, which would be a medical office building, and then expanding our cancer program that we have announced. It will be certain hospital projects here in Bend, including things in our operating rooms, our catheterization labs, and we still need to complete the lower-level floor of the new patient tower. It will also contemplate co-location of our administrative functions in a building that would be built and owned on our Bend campus. Those are the primary uses of the funds. In terms of the amount, it's a not-to-exceed of 120 million. We're currently contemplating it actually being 100 million. In terms of how we decide what the maximum amount is, we have certain leverage ratios, like a normal corporation, as to how much we can borrow versus the amount of our equity and assets. And so, based on our current debt structure, an added 100 or 120 million puts us at about a 33% leverage to capital ratio, which is appropriate for an organization, nonprofit health system, our size. So we balance the needs with what our actual borrowing capacity is.
You kind of have an industry standard of?
Yes.
The percentage of indebtedness, and you're within that. Do you actually have the authority to be over the industry standard, or is there, I don't know if there's regulation on debt of nonprofits, or?
Well, we have debt covenants. Those would provide us a much higher ceiling, but we are rated, like the county, by Standard and Coors and Moody's. And so we try to maintain our credit ratings, and that is really what we use as the guidepost.
And what's the, what's your, what do you have to pay back a year if you borrow $100 million? What's the annual cost of that money?
It varies. It's not even over the time period because we have other debt. So we will be issuing a number of series of bonds, with the biggest tranche of repayment out about 30 years from now. So, in total, with this debt and St. Charles's current debt, we service about $22 million a year of debt, principal and interest, for the health system as a whole.
And this would be just one of several bond sales that you have out there, or payments? Okay. Kind of curious how it works, because it's unique.
Okay, so it is now 10:16. Mr. Blonde, there's still no calls in, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, I do believe we could have, are your questions answered, Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner DeBohn, do you have any? No. Okay, so the public, I will reclose the public hearing with respect to the bonds, because it is now, must be, yes, 10:16 a.m. So, we do have a resolution which we, I believe, need to approve.
So I'd, I'd move approval of resolution 2020-061 to authorize the bond issue.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion?
Nope. I hope the projects work well and they gain some good, good service results as a result of it.
Thank you very much. On behalf of St. Charles, we appreciate the Board of Commissioners and Deschutes County's support. We haven't voted yet, Jen? Don't appreciate us.
We don't know for sure.
Okay. Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
Mr. DeBohn?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
There you go.
And so now you can appreciate us, and I'm just hoping that we will add a few more beds downstairs when that project is put into the timeframe for the new borrowing. So thank you, Jen, for joining us.
Just one more comment, you know, as a function of population growth, you know, we see this in the school district also, you know, every five years or so, it's how do we grow and keep up with the pace of growth? The system is growing, so this is the hospital system, St. Charles, our central Oregon hospital. We want to, you know, congratulate and support the fact that it's a growing system with a growing population. We want to keep it in alignment for the needs of the community, so.
And I will just remind everyone that we did just pass a resolution approving issuance of hospital revenue bonds, Series 2020, St. Charles Healthcare System by the Hospital Facility Authority of the Deschutes County, Oregon. So, thank you. Thank you for joining us this morning, and I'm sure we'll be talking to you soon.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
All right, so now we do have our COVID update, which is quite a bit earlier than we have on our agenda. I wonder if Nahad is available?
I am at your service.
Okay, Nahad.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Excellent. So let me please share my screen, and I believe we are now streaming live, so that's great. Thank you, Whitney and the team. Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for inviting us. For the record, my name is Nahad Sadrazodi. I'm the Director of Public Health for Deschute County. I'm the Director of Public Health for Deschute County Health Services. I have with me Dr. Richard Fawcett, our Health Officer, and Dr. Conway is also available on Zoom. Many thanks to Jenny Faith, our Epidemiologist, for the great data analysis. Also, as always, I would like to express my gratitude to our Health Services staff for their dedication, compassion, and meticulous work. Specifically, I want to mention our investigators and contact tracers and reiterate that one of the main reasons we are still containing this virus despite the surge that we are seeing is because of their tenacity and relentless efforts. I spent a few hours with our investigators and contact tracers, shadowing their work, and I was really humbled. The work that they do is not easy, it's not straightforward. To get the information, we need to contain this work, to contain this virus takes a lot of human skill, and I'm really proud of what they're doing. So, a shout-out to them. So, for the, for this week's quiz, perhaps Commissioner Adair, if you don't mind, you could kindly let us know about the prize for this week?
Yes, because you realize caffeine is actually okay in, you know, not in excess, but caffeine is okay. So, today, we're going to be having gift cards available for the first five from Belletaza, which is on Wall Street in downtown Bend. And I want to acknowledge all the things that Stuart has done to give back to the community. Actually, he collected water for Warm Springs for several months, remember, when they were having all their water issues? So, and then, he was actually delivering coffee to some of the dislocated that were living in Deschutes County. So I, you know, always want to recognize people in the community that are stepping up and making a difference. So, Belletaza will be the gift card, and you, but you just have to, you have to answer the question, you have to be one of the first five to answer it correctly, right?
Thank you. I don't know if one of the commissioners would mind reading this out loud, or?
Sure. Just who would like to?
I would be honored to. So this week's quiz question, "There are no FDA-approved coronavirus treatments at this time, true or false?"
Thank you, Commissioner. So just a reminder that to our community members, if you're watching this presentation on Facebook, just please insert your answer in the comments section. Great. So just?
Pardon me, so one more topic, this could be for Dr. George at the end, but there's, there was discussion right after last week's meeting. I had somebody contact me and ask me about, "When are we going to Phase 3?" So the concept of Phase 3, the terminology associated with it, and what would Phase 3 mean? And I've heard it a few times, so it's just something I'd ask that we make a comment on before the end of this.
Thanks, Commissioner DeBohn. It's well noted. Okay, just, just to promote the excellent website that our esteemed team has put together, thanks to Whitney Hale, Jenny Faith, and Morgan Emerson, and our IT specialists for this wonderful dashboard that our community members can refer to and get very accurate and timely information. So, so again, thank you to our colleagues for putting this together. A great resource for our community. Last week, I'm moving on to the next slide. Last week, we surpassed the unfortunate 200,000 COVID-related deaths milestone in our country, and globally, we passed the 1 million COVID-related death milestone. Also, unfortunately, most experts agree that these figures are underestimating the true COVID-related mortality. One way experts determine this assertion is by looking at excess deaths in a given period, which is the difference between the observed death counts and the expected death counts based on previous years. I would like to share a quick personal story, actually, about my former classmate and colleague at CDC. And to protect her identity, I'm calling her Joy, though that is not her real name. And I apologize if I cannot contain my emotions as I read through this. As I mentioned, we went to graduate school together, and we both worked at the CDC. She was athletic, fit, healthy eater, loved the outdoors, and loved to travel. What you see, what you kindly see on this screen is an email I received from her supervisor in May, and it reads as the following. What I was told is that Joy, again, this is not her real name, had been experiencing respiratory symptoms for a few weeks. On a call last Friday, some staff were concerned about how she sounded on the phone. Her colleagues checked in with her over the weekend, and when she didn't join a call on Tuesday, that is when her colleagues went to her home and found that she had died. And this is in May, and this is the email that I had received regarding my classmate, friend, colleague. So her death is not counted as COVID-related death, but given what was transpiring early on in the pandemic, in terms of testing supplies, quality of the tests, et cetera, it is really difficult to find other explanations. And generally, we do know that we are undercounting COVID cases, either because we don't have enough tests, or we're not really getting, or people are not going and getting tests. So in general, we are undercounting pretty much everything. I'm moving to the next slide. This graph is the cumulative numbers, which as of last evening stands at 859 cases and 12 deaths since March 11. And the flatter the line, the slower the rate of change, and the steeper the slope, for example, what we saw in July and what we're seeing in the last few weeks, the faster the rate of change. This next slide, in terms of the number of new cases reported during the week of 20 to 26 September, we see that the new cases have increased by more than 50% compared to the previous week. During the previous week, we reported 70 cases. This week so far, on Monday and Tuesday, we have had 20 cases reported.
20?
20, 2-0.
So Monday's the start date?
It was Saturday.
So we have, it goes until Saturday, and then, so Sunday, Monday, but the cases get reported Monday, Tuesday, one day later, by OHA Commissioner.
So one thing interesting, Nahad, is that if you just take the totals of the last two weeks, 46 and 70, the positives, that's 116. And we have 100, if you go back to the previous chart, we have 114 not released. So it sounds like we've kind of caught up, we don't have lots of lingering cases, because just the last two cases would be, make up, actually, two more than the 114 that are not released from isolation.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's very astute comment, Commissioner. I think that's a coincidence. What we don't see here is, these are cases, but also we are monitoring contacts. So the numbers are actually, in terms of who we are monitoring, on a daily basis, are higher than the difference we see here, which I can provide for you. But certainly, I think the message here is that it's not just getting the virus and either recovering or being hospitalized, it's also the long haulers that we keep hearing about, for months and months and months, trying to deal with some of the organ failures they're dealing with. But that's it.
Well, it would be interesting from a, you know, knowledge and science standpoint or whatever, to actually plot out the non-released cases to see how far back they do go, and what, you know, kind of like you do all these other charts, it'd be interesting to see there was one still left from the week of 614, 620, there's three from the next week. It'd just be interesting to see, because that's another knowledge, you know, another part of the knowledge about the disease and the virus.
Yeah, you're, you're right. We had, a few weeks back, we did have a couple, we had a slide with a similar question around that, I think you had asked wisely about that. And we did see that some of the folks who are not necessarily released yet are going on weeks and weeks into their recovery, still showing symptoms, and still being monitored. So, yeah, we can bring back that slide and update it very soon. Okay, so if I may, this, moving on to the next slide, obviously, this surge has affected the school metric of weekly case rates, which have been set at 10 cases per 100,000 for all students to return to in-person classes, and 30 cases per 100,000, so that are, for making exceptions for our K through 3 to return to in-person classes. Unfortunately, we have surpassed the threshold of even getting our K through 3 students back in classrooms, and we have to restart the clock at this point.
But actually, Nahad, Sisters is opening up their K through 3 next Monday.
Okay, so that decision has been finalized?
It's on the radio, and they've had, I believe, what the radio said was they've had zero cases since September 2nd in Sisters, the 977-59 zip code.
Okay, so I should then? Okay, so I should then differentiate. Thanks for making that distinction. So I should differentiate that Ben Lepine School System has decided to postpone reopening classes for K through three.
Well, and I think Redmond, I read, had decided not to do K through three in the last couple of days because of the uptick as well. So this, to me, so this is kind of trying to understand the system. So does Sisters School District then go to the state themselves and say, yeah, we know Deschutes County's like this, but we're healthier, so we should be able to reopen? And, and then the state, there's some, there's a judge at the state level that says, okay, you can. But, you know, is that basically how it's working or?
Right.
Do you know that? I mean?
I don't know that. I know that you can appeal it. And if you have special circumstances and the fact that they've had zero cases from the ZIP code that I live in now, you know, it's.
So you know they can appeal it? Do you know who they appeal it to?
Well, I'm sure to go to the head of the school board, the school.
The education department?
Yes.
Is that, is that what you understand also, Nahad?
Yes, Commissioner. I think Commissioner Dare is, is spot on. My understanding is also that the schools work closely with their boards, make those decisions, and then they negotiate with Oregon Department of Education, which is obviously consulting with the Oregon Health Authority. So that's the chain of command that I do understand.
Because my concern is, and we've started talking about this several weeks ago, is about what just has happened is what I was concerned about is, yeah, we're down in good territory for three weeks and then we're out of it. And then maybe we'll drop down there for three weeks, we'll be out of it, and this could go on. And if you look at the long history of the shutdown on the, or your earlier chart on the page before these, you know, we've been really, there wasn't much schooling going on from March 8th on because that was right before spring break and that was when they're out. So we're, we're into six months of a year and very little schooling's gone on. This could go on all fall. And I guess I wonder if somebody's questioning the metrics or questioning the whole process that way at a state level? If you know, Nahad?
Yeah. So I, I think if, if we can meet the metrics of reopening, then once we reopen and we have a surge in cases, then it will be a higher bar for us. To some extent, it would be a higher bar for us to reclose. That's my general sense. Of course, there could be some caveats in there, especially if we see hospital capacity being reduced. So I think the aim for us is to just get the numbers below the 30 and then below 10, reopen the schools, and then there'll probably be a higher, a higher threshold for reclosing. I think, I think Dr. Conway wants to weigh in.
Yeah, I think this is concerning. There was a meeting last night that a number of us were invited to, but the Central Oregon Medical Society, the interim superintendent was involved as one of the speakers, this was I. And I think that one of the things we may need to think about is what other things we're willing to do and what other activities we're willing to constrain in order to get us to a point where K through three can be kept open. Thank you.
But they did have the opportunity because we were actually, we were at 10 for three weeks. And when we dropped down below, we were below 30 for actually five weeks, six weeks.
Six weeks, yeah.
Yeah, we were below 30 for six weeks.
And they never jumped on the opportunity.
They didn't jump, right. So I know, Nahad, you have kinder, is it kindergartners or first graders now?
They're, they're first graders and they're still illiterate. So you can see the pressure that I'm facing right now.
Actually, and I, I'm actually very concerned about this as well. If you look at early childhood learning theory, basic pedagogical theory as well, this is a really critical age. Very young children in primary school probably are not readily educable online. I think there's very strong evidence for this. I think that some combination of taking other measures to assure that we stay below this threshold makes sense. And I think that, I'm actually, I'm not trying to settle the policy issue now, but I think that we need to have a broader community discussion about what we're going to do to ensure that these operations are protected and that this is one of the things that our society values very highly.
Well, I know one of the things that's really, I hear it from parents and I know personally, is you don't want your kids to be having that much screen time. And so now I just read Eastern Washington and all of the counties in Eastern White, and they all were saying, you know, they were going to do full learning at home. And I'm like, oh, my gosh. You really don't want your kids on, looking at a screen for four, five, six hours a day. It's, it's really not healthy. So that's, you know, and it's not healthy mentally either.
So, so Dr. Conway, if you, if you're having more meetings, I'd be interested in hearing about them a little bit because I really wonder if we shouldn't just be not trying so hard to get school. And it's been six months of really not very good schooling and that, of course, summer vacation was in the middle, but that means at least three months. But we're now into the full schedule. I wondered why we don't just, for older kids, maybe they all get jobs for the next six months and we start school a year later. I mean, if, if we're really going to just kind of bounce along here, which is very possible, that's an issue. The other thing I wonder is why we're not, with younger kids particularly, why not just use big, open spaces for schooling instead of trying to do it the way they've always done it in certain sized classrooms? Like, why don't, why don't one of the schools use the fairgrounds? For instance, is, you know, we have big, big rooms. I mean, I don't know what they're thinking about in education, but if you're having more discussions, because I don't, I don't know that if you shut down more things and you get the 40 to 49-year-olds and the 50 to 59-year-olds and everybody not having, testing positives, that that's going to work for our economy very well or whatever. And it's, it's kind of unrelated to whether kids can learn. And so I just, I don't know. It just seems we need some out-of-the-box thinking as this goes on month after month. It sounds like you're doing some of that, but it's great to hear about it.
Well, I appreciate you saying that, Commissioner. I think some of the innovation is a good idea. There is, I mean, you know, OD has gone through, I think it's three iterations of the guidance. There's been some tweaking. There's been some tweaking to the metrics. I hope that we can get things back down without further constraints. I think the evidence is that we're, we're accumulating cases for a variety of reasons. There's, as far as other meetings go, what happened last time with CUMS is just we were invited speakers to their, their monthly meeting. It was a topic we invited quite a while ago. I am looking and hope to be in a position to propose combinations of protecting different levels of society, possibly using some of the new and low-cost tests that we're hoping to get very soon. And we're getting actually some more information about that later today, which may, may support or not that, that kind of approach. So I think this, I just, I really only wanted to raise that this is a, an urgent policy issue that we really need to be wrestling with and that we may have some opportunity to provide some leadership in, rather than trying to settle it now. Thank you.
So looking ahead, it appears that the 20 to 29-year-old is still the primary positive for our positives in Deschutes County. And that, the good news was, we did end the month at 3% hospitalization, Nahad?
Are you further in the?
Yeah, I mean, I just feel like we're, you know, we need to, what is it? What, what are the real numbers? What's happening? Okay, so hospitalization originally was 29% and now it's actually gone down to 3%? I, I think, you know, we need to focus on some of those things. Should go with the argument of getting our schools back, our kids back into school. So Nahad, where are you at then, actually?
Well, I, I'm on slide eight, history of travel, because these are some of the drivers behind, behind where we're seeing the surge in cases. So I can, I can just quickly go through them. You're right, there are a number of metrics that are being considered or should be considered as well. And it might help to have this kind of public exchange also with our, with our schools. I don't, I don't know the arrangement for that, but I'd love to hear more from them as well. So just, so what we're hearing from investigators and contact tracers is that many cases are linked to socializing and interacting, often without masks, in close proximity. And a lot of these interactions are happening in the context of traveling, especially during the holidays. As we saw early on in September, when the surge was, was happening, we noticed, or was starting, we noticed that a higher proportion of the cases had travel history. Although now it looks more similar to August data, but early on, if we look at it from a timeline around the holiday, we did see a higher proportion reporting travel history. And what's interesting also, going to the next slide, is that in September, we are seeing three-quarters of the cases categorized as household contacts, clusters, outbreaks, and, and close contacts. And in fact, in the most recent week, which is September 20th to 26th, around 40% of the cases were listed with, as having household linkages. And so I guess it makes sense, to me, it makes sense because earlier in September, many of the cases had travel history. Potentially, they brought the virus back to our communities. And since then, we're seeing the virus circulating and being transmitted in household settings and close contacts and businesses. So I think this pattern makes quite a bit of sense. And that's what I think the data are also substantiating as well.
But you know, Nahad, if you look at, I mean, I hear what you're saying and there's been a lot made of Labor Day being the reason we have this uptick now. But when you really compare July, August, and September, they're all within 2% of each other. It doesn't seem like there's been a, we didn't jump to 44% like we did in June. And so there, if you just do them as a pattern, it's, and travel does go on this time of year. Maybe it'll decrease, but look at, you know, I don't know. And then the same with the linkages. For four, well, really going back to May, it's been almost three-quarters of the cases have either been household or cluster. I do, it doesn't, there are more household over the last three months, which like you said, doesn't surprise you. And it doesn't, doesn't surprise me because that's where people are the most intimate and most around each other and breathe each other's air and et cetera. But I don't, I don't see the, really the macro numbers being that different, really, month after month here for the last three months.
Yeah, I think in general, you're correct, Commissioner. I think the distinction here is really, I suppose, devils in the details. If we look at the cases and the history of those cases around holiday periods, we see an increased proportion of those reporting travel history. Then of course, as we go throughout the month, those numbers are going to get diluted because the transmission is shifting from maybe being imported into our community to then being transmitted in our community. But I think that's where the distinction is. And I think the point I'm trying to make here is that our behaviors tend to change a bit during holiday events or celebrations or events. And if we don't modify those behaviors, we're going to continue seeing patterns that you rightfully mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, these ups and downs.
But, yeah, I see that. And you know, what's concerning on your, your chart about county cases by week is that if you take out Mount Bachelor Memory Care Unit in those weeks in July, where if you spread those cases over two or three weeks, we're as high now last week as we were back then. So it's two months la, two months later and we're doing, we're back to where we were.
You're making a great point, actually, and I like to build on that. You're, that's a really good point. Initially, we were thinking that Mount Bachelor outbreak and other long-term carepacy outbreaks were skewing the numbers. But you're right, we're not necessarily facing those outbreaks and the numbers are almost reaching those heights. So I think that's a very good point. And, and I'd like to now move maybe to this slide, which is really getting to the talks of some of the drivers here. And I think Commissioner Dare rightfully mentioned this. I mean, we, we are seeing the most affected age category is really those in their 30s. Oh, sorry, in their 20s. I said 30s because I was thinking about my own age, but it's really 20s. Or what we call young adults. And that's because really of the occupational and behavioral factors, which puts them at higher risk for exposure and transmission. And to that, I'd like to share a quick story. And this is a true story about our young adult spreaders. The bartender, as, as, as you can kindly see on the slide here, a bartender worked in a small establishment where distancing was difficult. The bartender became infected with COVID-19 and worked during the two days prior to symptom onset, unknowingly exposing many patrons who visited there one evening. Everyone socializing at the bar that night was quite young, mostly in their 20s. A few days later, five of the young customers tested positive for COVID-19 and the bar was their only risk factor. So that was the main risk factor they all had in common. The bar closed for a few days and then another local business had to close for two weeks because some of the associated cases with the bar were staff members at that other business. But the second business was unable to stay open because the entire staff was either, was either isolating or quarantining during that period. So you can see the ripple effect of this scenario, the impact it has both on our lives as well as on our economy. And really, I think the point here is that younger adults do make up a higher or a large proportion of workers in frontline occupations. That would be such as, you know, retail stores, childcare, social services, and highly exposed industries. And that's what this particular example refers to, which is restaurants, bars, entertainments, and so on, where consistent implementation of preventive strategies might be difficult or even impossible at times. In addition, Commissioners, younger adults might also be less likely to follow community mitigation strategies, such as physical distancing or avoiding group gatherings. And finally, young adults who are more likely to have mild or no symptoms can unknowingly contribute to presymptomatic or asymptomatic transition, transmission to others, including those with pre-existing conditions or higher risk of severe illness or are elderly. So I think it's important for my young brothers and sisters in our communities to know that this infection is not benign. And especially among those young adults with underlying medical conditions, they are at risk of hospitalization, severe illness, and even death. So they're at risk and the community's at risk because of the, some of the choices they're making and some of the occupational factors. So with that, I will now hand over to my esteemed colleague, Dr. Fawcett. Dr. Fawcett, you're on camera.
My turn.
I'm going to bring this to you. Commissioners, can you hear Dr. Fawcett?
Good morning.
Yes, we can now.
Okay, terrific, great.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me. So I guess we have the next slide 12. I just want to add to what Nahad was saying too, that we talked about this before, but I also believe that if we think about our assisting living facilities, nursing facilities, et cetera, that a lot of the caregivers are younger adults as well. And part of that is just practical. You know, some of the work they have to do is physically strenuous. And I do believe that those caregivers do their best, but they are younger adults and they are in a frontline. That, that for sure is a frontline occupation if ever there was one. And so it's a difficult situation. They need to be careful when they're socializing, when they're off work, as well as the days in between their shifts. So it's a hard, hard thing to, to be diligent about. But I think we know from other states and in our own experience here that caregivers often seem to get infected before the residents do. Okay, so moving on, slide 12. Looking at September compared to the other months, we still see that we have a proportional, proportionally higher incidence of cases in younger adults, middle-aged adults, compared to earlier in the, in the pandemic back in the spring. in younger adults, middle-aged adults, compared to earlier in the pandemic back in the spring. Commissioner Dare mentioned the percent hospitalizations, which are lower certainly than in the spring. And for this month in September, for our Deschutes County residents, that percentage is about the lowest we've seen, although we still do have patients in the hospital from other counties, as we'll talk about in a minute. But I do believe that there is a loose correlation between the percentage of more elderly patients who are infected with COVID-19 and the percent hospitalization. So if we go back to March and April, where we had thirty-eight percent of all of our cases were in patients aged sixty or greater, we had almost thirty percent hospitalization. So there seems to be some correlation there too, I believe. Then going on, next slide now. So here's looking at our data for testing by week. We, as we've been mentioning, are in a upswing in terms of the total number of positive tests and also the test positivity rate. That rate is about 4.4%, which is of course increasing. So looking at the raw data here, once again, the light shaded columns are the number of negative tests. The dark shaded columns at the bottom of the column are the number, total numbers of positive tests, which for this past week, September 20th to 26th, was sixty-two positive tests. And so the total number of tests there are listed on the top at 1,414. So I think the data speaks for itself there. I want to say we're still under five percent for our positive test rate. So that's encouraging. We don't want to go over that because that is also a school metric. Next page.
Dr. Fawcett, before you go on real quick, so we've had this testing regime, you know, fourteen hundred or so, I mean, up and down for three months now. So we've, that's, you know, we've done a lot of tests in Deschutes County. I don't know what the total is. Be interesting to know how many people have been tested. But so if we get more testing capacity, which I heard last night, or I think it was on the news maybe yesterday or day before, that the White House has 151 million tests coming out from Abbott Labs or whatever, how does that really affect, what do you expect that to do? Are we going to lower our metrics or raise our metrics? I mean, it's just kind of interesting if this, I mean, I'd want to be tested if I was sick or if I was going to get a procedure where the, but do we, are we going to randomly test everybody and?
No, I would say Commissioner Henderson, that there's still some challenges in getting tests for individuals. You know, I think, I hear about this week to week. Some of this has to do, just one example is there are certain transitions in the hospital. In particular, a lot of these folks that have been hospitalized for more than a week or two benefit from an inpatient rehabilitation unit that we have in the ground floor of the hospital, which is a great job. But as you can imagine, because that is a unit where they're basically doing physical and occupational therapy, other kinds of therapies, you know, eight AM to four PM, a lot of hands-on work. They actually have lunch and dinner together. They want to test all of those patients before they go from their inpatient bed down to the inpatient rehab unit. And what's happened here is they've not had enough of the rapid tests. So they're having to use the test University of Washington for those new admissions. So it's tricky because they're tested, you know, it's better right now, but a week or two ago, we were waiting five, six days for those tests to come back. So you have a patient who's now in the rehab unit, working with physical occupational therapists, having lunch and dinner with other patients on the ward, are waiting four or five days to make sure that that test is negative. So, you know, I think that having more availability will help. To me, the most important number still is that test positivity rate. If you have ten tests per week or you have, you know, a million, the rate won't change much aside from looking at certain, focusing your testing to certain populations like you mentioned before. But if we can test maybe a larger variety of any types of patients, I think the positivity rate will still be reliable and helpful.
Well, I would think there'd be a lot of employers that, like the examples Nahad gave about the bars, that, you know, if I owned a bar and I wanted to keep it open and I wanted to be real sure about that, I'd want to test my employees as part of the work process, you know, every other day or something, just so I never had that circumstance where I lose two weeks or a month of shutdown or whatever.
Totally agree. You know, parts of your business are doing well and parts are not. Professional sports seem to be doing, they test very frequently. It's another example where we haven't seen lots of games shut down. Yeah, so I think, you know, our confidence in staying healthy and lowering the risk is greater when we can test more often.
Commissioner Henderson, I think there are a couple of you Commissioners who are U of O graduates, so I don't know if you're big fans of football or not and.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, so I think the, I think Pac-12, Big Ten, that's my, Big Ten is my country.
Where is that? I don't, we're not.
Don't know about the Big Ten?
The other side of the country. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Yeah, yeah, I, it's where real football's from.
Oh, well, we were going to get our chance this year and you guys got this.
So Commissioners, I think the models they have put in place in terms of testing and keeping their players and administrators safe, I think is, I think is a model that we can actually move towards if we do have more point-of-care tests available. And the example you gave about employers is a really good one in that how they could be more agile in this uncertain environment to respond to the needs of their staff and their businesses.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
So looking again at the school metrics, this is targeting that five percent test positivity rate. We're under that fortunately, although we're creeping upwards unfortunately towards that bar. I think that is a very important metric in my view. And hopefully we'll stay under that five percent mark. Next slide looks again at hospitalizations again. This is week to week and looking at the total numbers of patients at St. Charles Bend Hospital, actually every day is listed here. So it's a daily tally data from the hospital. As of, I think, this morning, there were four patients in the hospital instead of three. And two on the ICU, both of whom were ventilators. And then two, of course, that are outside the ICU. So hospitalization numbers are stable and lower than they were earlier in the summer, and that's encouraging.
Dr. Fawcett, are those all Deschutes County then? I know three of them were, is the fourth one of?
Right, good point. So three of the four are from Deschutes County. Yeah, and I, I'll make sure that we update the data from the former slide where we're talking about percent hospitalizations as a function of age. And, yeah.
Updated.
Is that updated for today though? Because I think, I think.
As of yesterday.
Yeah, right. So it looks like there's another patient, at least one admission from Deschutes County resident. Moving on.
Yep.
So again, for a schooling musician, just want to put a reminder out there to make sure that there's a focus and some mindfulness regarding other vaccine-preventable diseases, especially measles, pertussis, where we have had exposure over the past year in Deschutes County. And then a quick shout out for adult vaccinations. It's time to get our influenza vaccine. This will be.
Children.
Yeah, for everybody. There's an adult pictured on the slide there. But all persons over age six months are eligible to get their influenza vaccine. We want the flu season to be as uneventful as possible for obvious reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fawcett. So just to wrap it up, yes, we do want, this is the photo, as you can tell, Dr. Conway is quite photogenic. So he's, this is a photo of him getting the flu shots, demonstrating the importance of getting the flu vaccine this year as early as possible. We don't need to wait until end of October, which we usually do. But this year, I think it's best to go in. I got, me, my family, all of us were vaccinated. And then we had ice cream afterwards at a local business. So that's, that I think is a given, right? It's a must. After vaccinating, we have to get ice cream.
Yes, I do think that's a must. Good idea.
I think it's written, it's in this code of the county somewhere. I'm not sure where exactly. This, I'm sorry, did you want to chime in?
I was just agreeing with you. It's in the code somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate your sense of humor, actually during these very intense periods. If we don't exercise some level of humor, I think it can really bring us all down. So I appreciate really the exchanges that we're having. And before I go into, give the last slides on the quiz, let me just share some of the key messages from my perspective. Even during crisis, we cannot compromise our Deschute values. And we've talked about those over and over, being kind and compassionate and forgiving and being smart, making the right choices, being caring towards one another and being united. I know we live in a perhaps partisan environment these days or months or years, but frankly, it doesn't matter. We are all united as Deschutes residents and citizens against this virus. Because this virus cannot tell the difference between our political ideologies or what have you. It's important to keep in mind that as young adults, we can be exposed to this virus through our choices and through our occupations. We can get sick, hospitalized, and be at risk of severe illness. And we can be the ones transmitting this virus to older populations, those at risk. And a recent CDC study actually highlighted this point. And it's not too late. Even with the surge that we're seeing right now, we cannot get down on ourselves and think, oh, now it's over, it's downhill. No. Today, we can make the choice to make a difference with our behaviors in terms of wearing masks, physical distancing, washing our hands, being more outdoors than indoors, and being more cautious. And it can make a difference. There's a cause and effect here. So it's never too late. And definitely do get your vaccines, especially the flu shots. All people over the age of six months are eligible, of course, with some caveats. And pharmacists and other, pharmacists and other vendors definitely create more access points for us, making it more convenient for us to get vaccinated. So moving on to the last slide on the quiz, which was there are no FDA-approved coronavirus treatments at this point. So this is a bit of a, either you could look at it as a trick question or you could look at it as sort of me accommodating everyone today. One, I like to think of it as the latter. And so if we had community members who said true, yes, technically, there are no official FDA-approved coronavirus treatments at this point. And if they said, if we had community members who said false, they're also correct in their way because we do have emergency use authorization for free drugs and treatments that have been approved. That's remdesivir, dexamethasone, and comalucemplasma.
Nahad, this could be a problem. You're telling me they could either be A or B? And, okay, let's.
It's about engaging the community, Commissioner.
Well.
Well, I think.
I think B is more accurate though, if you followed it, because there have been treatments that have been approved, like you said, on an emergency basis or on a temporary basis. That is out there and we know that. And you didn't ask, are there, there are no completely approved, FDA-approved? You said, are there any? False seems more correct.
Well, and take a moment. So we're talking about treatments and not vaccine here. Because if I first read the question, my brain went to vaccine and then the word says treatment. So treatment means somebody that's sick and it's a way to deal with the sickness. And a vaccine is how to vaccinate against getting sick, even though you might be exposed.
That's, that's true.
Yeah, you know, and just a thought about that, that's kind of interesting. When I read that book on the 1918 flu and, you know, the thing that dominated the medical work in that era was trying to find the treatments and to solve it. We weren't yet used to getting vaccines for everything like we have in the last hundred years. That wasn't, so now we focus on the vaccines, but the treatments was really the thing. How do we avoid people? They got it. How do we avoid them getting sicker or dying?
And. Reducing the sickness, how sick you get, and then reducing deaths.
Well, the fact that more people died of that flu in 1918 than died in the First World War, 53,000 Americans died in the First World War. I actually was at the pandemic center a year ago, September. And that was the first department I walked into. And I thought, gosh, I wonder why I'm here. And reading everything in the Natural History Museum Pandemic Center was very enlightening. So I think when I go back to Washington, I should go back and, you know, and say, okay. But okay, the Nahad, the really sad thing is, according to Whitney, we had no answers with the B. We had three answers with A. So, okay. No, we have no winners.
He says they're both winners.
Technically, I think A is also those who answered A. Based on the way it's written, I think they could qualify. Of course, I leave that to your.
Okay, so you're saying like, boy, that's an interesting.
Everybody gets a prize.
Everyone gets a trophy.
This is one of those rare opportunities where.
Nahad, remember, we're ducks.
Everyone's a winner, yes.
We like.
As I mentioned, the terminology for phase three, this came up a few times recently. Yeah, somebody said, oh, did you hear we're going to phase three on some date? And that was just scuttlebutt and they thought, they knew it was scuttlebutt. But somebody must be talking about it. So I did ask Dr. George about this. What is, what is an expectation for a phase three? Do you want to share with us?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I will share a screen. Oh, someone needs to allow me to do that apparently. Try this again. Here we go.
And so the concept of phase three was when our numbers were so good. So this week looks even different, you know, because they're jumping so quickly. But it's just the terminology at this point.
So hopefully you see a screen with the reopening Oregon phase, phase directions on it.
It's going to be hard to read.
We can't read it.
Well, okay, so I'll read it. And actually, well, what I can do is I can blow it up because it's really just phase three that we're interested in this instance. So phase three is basically aspirational at this point. And that would be mass gatherings such as major concerts, sporting events with live audiences. And that will require a reliable COVID-19 treatment or vaccine. And we're frankly nowhere near that.
Yeah, so that's the reality. Phase three is basically opening up large, but also having treatments and vaccines out there and available and proven. So that is a big step.
Well, and it must be in phase three too, that they would allow indoor gatherings to be larger than they are now, like a restaurant or a store or whatever. Is that?
My understanding is that phase three means moving back toward what we regard as normal life for March, for February.
One perspective I wanted to share, I had a chance to go to the coast this last weekend for an anniversary and some things I observed there in the, those in the Lincoln City, Newport, Depot Bay area. There's a lot of businesses that are still very restricted that they can't go on like this forever. One was a farmer's market where they only let in fifty people. And these are the ones spread out on the lawns and only fifty people can meander around there. Well, that maybe normally would be 150 people, kind of all elbow to elbow. So you wonder how all those arts and crafts people are able to do it. Another was they have some kind of notable restaurants that people know. Well, they're shut down. Well, they're shut down still to a third as many people going to them. There's a couple of breakfast places. So they're not, you know, they're not, they can't be doing very well, I mean, with that.
Oh, the, the numbers are huge of the restaurants.
Yeah. And I'm also, I know that, like, just radio stations, they're, they're off. I met with somebody from, I met, when I went to the rodeo, 35% off. And if you go to a radio station day, you'll see there's not very many personnel working. And so this, this economic thing is so diverse of how it's been still affecting. And I'm very, and I'm still concerned with another month and two months. And there, the one thing I did see is lots of travel. I mean, there's as much travel on the coast and traffic as there is here. It's, it's, I mean, people are going places and I think motels are doing pretty well. Happened to see a casino and the casino, you know, only three people can play blackjack on a table that could have six or eight, you know? So kind of interesting, just seeing a different area and seeing what's going on out there in the world from an economic standpoint.
Were you in Newport then?
I, I was, well, we went through Newport, but we were in Depot Bay and then Lincoln City.
Got an email from someone saying that they had been in Newport and the businesses in Newport much were strongly supporting all the rules than what we're doing in Deshute County.
I think they are, I think they are in Depot Bay. And, I mean, the restaurants that we did go to, very spread out, the, you know, providers were, were doing what they were supposed to do. Yeah, I think they were in both Lincoln City and, and Depot Bay, which are just north of Newport.
Right.
Thought they were taking it pretty seriously.
Well, listening to the airlines industry and the factor that they're really needing some financial dollars from the government in order to stay in existence. I sent another text to Congressman Walden yesterday. I cannot believe, I couldn't have lunch inside a restaurant in Deshute County without having my temperature taken and yet you can get on a plane still. And I don't understand why TSA has not implemented just taking your temperature. I just think it's, you know, there's a few little things that you could do and I feel like it would make people feel so much safer to get on a plane. So, yeah, they're still not implementing that. And I, you know, not as many people are flying. So, you know, make it, at least make it feel safer. Yeah, it's, it's really, it's an issue.
So for our health department, I think those are concerns we have as commissioners with regard to the economy and how all this plays out as well. I guess we probably all share that, don't we?
Absolutely.
Oh, it's, it's, yes, the, the restaurant numbers for the country. I was listening this morning on the Business Channel and how many of them are going to be able to survive? And of course, you've seen what's happened in New York City. So, you know, they don't have indoor dining. Yeah, it's, it's like, it's, New York isn't going to be there when we want to go visit someday. So I believe we now have, thank you, Nahad, Dr. Fawcett, Dr. Conway for joining us today. And I believe we have the CARES Act funding update.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I guess we have five winners. So.
Go Bucks.
Five winners.
Go Bucks.
Okay, so. Yes. Okay, Greg, would you like to take over?
Yes. Samantha, can you share my screen, please? Maybe I can do it right here. Hang on. All right. Good morning again, commissioners. Greg Munn, CFO for the county. And as I promised a week or so ago, coming back to you today with a status report. I'll continue to do this on Wednesdays, status report of our coronavirus relief fund allocations. And what I've got here is essentially just a communication tool. There's lots of moving parts. There's been lots of changes over the last several months. But the goal is to provide a status report, communication device, that will allow you to keep up to speed on what is going on with our, our coronavirus relief funds. So with that, this is the format I'll be sharing with you periodically, even weekly. And I'll just walk you through it right now for the first time. I, I will get you a hard copy of this. It is, it's fresh off the press. So I'll give this to you today later in your inbox.
Greg, you might want to try to zoom in once or twice, see if you can fill the screen a little better.
It's pretty small.
Is it?
Yes. It's about 40% of the screen. Now you're going the wrong way. Bigger, bigger's better. Okay, you're like at 50, 60.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah. Well, mm-hmm. Okay, we know we'll get a hard copy.
Okay, so I'll just point out the highlights here. So the amount up here at the top in orange that you see, $6,405,575, that was the original allocation of CARES Act funds that came from the feds through the state to us. So that's the amount that we have been drawing on and also been the topic conversation in allocation, in funding allocations that you've made. This next section down here below, these, this is, and I was hoping to show it to you all on one piece, on one screen, but I'm not going to be able to do that. But these are, this is the format that the state requires us to submit our reimbursements. So we've submitted three reimbursements so far. One was for costs through May 15th, one was through June 30th, and then one was through August 7th. And we continue to work on these reimbursements and submit them to the state. As we move forward, I will populate these columns after the 8/7 and bring you up to speed. But these are the categories that have been identified that are eligible for reimbursement. So we'll continue to see those.
Greg, I want to have a question about this. So those first three columns you got really were kind of on the original rules, right? That we, they gave us guidelines and then we found opportunities where we met those guidelines. We've, we spent the money through August 5th or 6th, whatever it is. This is all before the decision we made of how to spend, where they finally said, well, you can spend this amount of money and all at once. And we weren't kind of nickel diming it anymore. We were saying, here, here's our allotment to, to Neighbor Impact. Here's our, the big allotments. Is that right? They all came after.
Yep, that's exactly right. And I'll get to that here in just a second.
Good, thank you.
So pay attention to this column D here. I'm going to scroll to the bottom. This amount here in orange, this $4.6 million amount should be familiar to you. This is the amount that our, our previous discussions have been on in terms of allocating those funds out to various organizations for various purposes related to the COVID-19 endemic. And if you can envision that horizontal piece of paper where we had column A, column B, C and D, that's what this is related to. So we had $4.6 million to allocate. I'm going to scroll down here and these are the allocations that you've made. So I'm going to just scroll down. I'm going to come back to them in a second. But this was the initial allocation. These are all the items. And then on September 9th, we, are you approved the allocation of these two items? The total amount approved to date is that number there, $4,446,188. I'm going to go back to the top. Now, we know that those were just initial approvals and that it is possible that some of those projects may not spend the full amount approved. And that's what this column is for here.
So where did the $90,000 add back for the Navigator?
So I'll get to that in the, I'll, I'll talk about this again in a minute. But the Health Services, the $120,000, this amount here that was originally approved was for a full year, that position. And because we have a 1230 cutoff for spending, they realize that they can only spend three months worth. So the $90,000 here is essentially a give back because they can't meet that spending cutoff date of December 30th. Let me touch on one more, this line right here. So these, this was the Environmental Health Fees rebate. We had an initial estimate of $572,000. We actually, last week, and there was an update on this, sent out $545,698. So this resulted in a give back of $26,302.
So where did that come from?
This amount here?
Yes.
That's just simply the difference between when we actually went in, pulled all of the environmental fees that were paid in 2020 and calculated the rebates. This 572 was an original estimate. The 545 was the actual amount. So this is the difference that goes back into the pool.
So there's quite a few line items there on the, the money we authorized on September 2nd or whatever it was. Are, so do we do anything to be able to explain how, or follow how successful each of these allocations have been? Is there, do we have an employee or several employees that are kind of tracking it? They're checking in with different entities saying, you know, like the ref, rebates of, you know, what were the comments from the restaurants? What, what's Neighbor Impact said about what they're doing? I mean, I see things like mortgage assistance. You know, how is, how's that going out to, how many people are, are getting that? It'd be, I don't know, it's, it'd be good to know what we've accomplished with this money, I guess, is how I see it.
Yep, yeah. So, so you're exactly on track and that's exactly what we're doing here. This will be a weekly update. Sometimes it'll just be me giving you an update, but sometimes we'll have the project sponsors that can come and talk in more depth about outcomes and what has actually been accomplished. But if you give me just a second, I think I'll get to at least part of your question. So again, this was the original amount that was approved. These are any adjustments that will be coming in. And here's the revised amount. So I'm going to scroll to the bottom. We have a revised amount that's been approved, approved minus given back of $4.3 million. The difference between the $4.6 million that we had to start with and this $4.3 million is $284,000. And over the course of these next few weeks and on, probably until the end of December, there will be occasionally new proposals that will come before you to consider to utilize some of this funding. In fact, today we have one that once I'm done with this here, we'll put them on the Zoom and present a proposal to spend some of that money. Then out here, and I am going to, I can't read this on my screen, so I'm going to walk you through this. But I need to make it smaller so I can see it.
Greg, it's really too bad that we didn't, we weren't emailed this before our meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And I apologize for that. It didn't, we weren't able to get this wrapped up until right before board time today. We will get these to you ahead of time. We'll get these to you ahead of time in the future, though.
Thank you. That would be.
So what I'll do is I'm going to walk you through the updates that we have. And I think this will answer some of your questions. So on the bilingual community education, engagement and education support, staff's finalizing scope of work this week.
Yeah, because I can't read that.
A2, I realize you can't see this, but this was the graphic video, social media work. Staff is producing regular video content for social media on the website and will begin releasing new animations and other content on a regular basis, beginning in mid to late October. The Health Services Navigator originally approved for $120,000. The Health Services says the original request was for an annual FTE, but it's been revised to three months. And they will be coming back as soon as next week to you, to ask for utilization of a part of that savings for a resilience program coordinator. Rental assistance, these are funds that have been obligated to Neighbor Impact. As of today, $243,000 of the $600,000 has been obligated. Forty-five households have been served with 299 months of rent.
So on that one, Greg, so it looks, so that's an example where that group, I think it's Neighbor Impact, was decided on the, who the 49 households were and how much the rent allocation would be. And, and they have some process that they vet all that. Is that kind of how you understand it?
They do. Yep, that's exactly right. And in the next week or two, I'm going to have Scott Cooper come back on and give you more in-depth information on where all of these allocations are. Next item is mortgage payment assistance. So they've obligated $15,000 of the $300,000 so far. Two households have been served and they've received 52 applications. So they continue to work through those.
So where's the winter sheltering contract? Where is that located? Because it says.
I can't hear you. Excuse me?
The winter sheltering, where is that contract located?
It is, we have a signed contract. That simply means that we have an agreement based on this $100,000 allocation. And that's just the status of that. I, I don't know anything more than actually the fact that we have a contract.
I don't, commissioners, I'm not sure that they've identified an actual shelter.
They don't.
And I believe the contract is contingent upon them finding a, a shelter this winter. So if they're, they all.
We still don't have one and it's now going to be October 1st tomorrow. And the warming station at the sheriff's office is not available. So, oh my gosh, it's going to start getting really cold again and.
Well, the home, you know, I saw an ICE editorial yesterday about it, that we needed better leadership supposedly. And, you know, and there was, it was kind of glossed over that this was brought up last year that they needed to start in the spring to find something. And there's a large body of people that are involved in this and I, I don't know. I haven't re, I haven't re-engaged, but we, we could try to do something else. But we've made it pretty clear about the work center, so.
I know, it was really unfortunate that the city never gave us the permission to go to, to take care of those homeless, right? To cross their land, right? We never got that. So, yes.
Oh, on Juniper Ridge, yeah.
Yes, on Juniper Ridge. The city of Ben never gave permission, which was really.
But this is a separate issue.
I know. But I mean, I'm just saying, that was unfortunate. So now we've, now we've still got a homeless warming shelter that has not been found. And, oh my gosh, you know how cold, it was in the freezing already in.
Yesterday.
Yeah, it's been really.
Freezing and then it went up to 90.
Yeah, I know.
$100,000 would, would pay for quite a bit of a facility if it was a, I don't know. I would like to help with it. I just, nobody's asked, you know. Last year went to the big meeting and it came out of it that we came up with an A solution. But the group itself is, I guess hasn't, so maybe we could do something. We did, that's part of the money.
It's going to be compounded with COVID regulations and, and, you know, distancing requirements and.
What's, they would be?
The whole thing is going to be compounded. Is that much more hard to do?
Well, I think, yeah, that was the case with the Red Cross on the evacuees.
Yeah.
They don't, what I was told when I went to the fairgrounds and, Dr. One Person is, yeah, they can't, they can't even set up a Red Cross shelter anymore that works because of all these restrictions.
Okay, well, if you're out there listening, it really is going to start getting cold here. And maybe, you know, I know we went through all our county inventory, did we not, last year, to see where we could place it, things, and we didn't have COVID then. And, you know, things were either too small, they didn't have this, they didn't have that. And fortunately, the sheriff stepped up. So, gosh, there's got to be something out there. I mean, I realize that properties right now are selling their, people aren't even seeing them and they're buying them into Deshute County, you know, two days they're listed and they're being sold. So there's got to be.
But there are, there is empty commercial space. There are, there is empty commercial space, and the empty businesses. I mean, that, that's not selling as so well, because people are going, you know, businesses are closing, and so there may be some opportunities like that, but, okay, sorry, I guess we got off track.
Well, it is, I saw the 100,000, and I'm worried.
Okay, next item, COVID isolation space. We, Neighbor Impact is programmed to pay the rent for October, November, December, and the first third of about $35,000 will be going out next week. The food truck is operating, and just a couple of notes, on the first day of operations, they delivered 40 food boxes to wildfire victims, 60 boxes to St. Vincent de Paul, and picked up five pallets of commodity food boxes from cold storage. That's already on the ground. Childcare operations, support through Neighbor Impact, they are gathering applications. 168 have been mailed out for funding so far, 75 have been completed and returned. Contracts are being processed this week, and the first bridge grant funds will be flowing beginning the week of August, or October 5th, at an estimated amount of $75,000 per week. Better Together here, item C1, first round of support, checks will be issued at the end of this week, in an amount of about 365,000 to nine subcontracted providers. The rebate checks for environmental health fees, I mentioned this earlier, $545,000 in checks to, I think we had about 1,000 checks, were issued at the end of last week.
Who decided, so the business support grants, who decided where those went?
This item, the environmental health fees?
No.
The business support grants?
There's nothing there.
Those, I don't have an update on those today. This 150,000?
Yeah. So is there a plan to do that? I mean, we have some experience, David Givens and I were on the committee with COIC, and about how we did that, I don't know. And I thought, actually, COIC was going to do another program through Business Oregon. There was a big chunk of money that was coming, but I haven't heard a word about that.
I don't, I don't have an update on that either. I do know that we, well, with your help, we actually were able to place some temporary help there to...
Right, right.
...processing of that.
Right.
Yeah, and I heard yesterday that that work is slowing down, so my guess is that we should be seeing some of the results of that pretty soon.
Greg, something to look at for Better Together for the childcare. I know there was some funding allocated for Sisters, so we, you know, there may be some money that kind of moves around for the Sisters program, especially if the K-33 is going to be opening up school next week.
Yes, there's money allocated to the Circle of Friends, and to Sisters Park and Rec in the Sisters area.
Well, Circle of Friends will, it kind of, it works in addition to school, so that, that makes sense. And the parks, I'm sure is going to be after school.
With regard to the childcare, all that money is going through Neighbor Impact, is that correct?
Yes, this item here, and again, these, these are daycare, daycare, I'm trying to think of the right term.
Support grants, or something?
Daycare, yeah, it's daycare backfill, so if the daycare was normally operating with 60, with their full capacity, with 60 children, and because of separation and new requirements, they were cut to 30, this, these dollars would essentially subsidize that gap and allow them to stay open.
So that's being done by Neighbor Impact. What about the Ben Chambers programs for, are they connected with that money also, or that program? Because I know that was when they have a person dedicated to childcare.
Yes, yeah, we have a proposal coming from the Ben Chamber today, at the end, when we finish here, so in a little bit. And I think we could hold that question for Katie Brooks, she'll be on the line here in a minute.
Oh, good, yeah, that's good to know.
Let's see if we can get through this here. So, small business development, capital formation through COCC, the program is on track. We now have over 15 business owners who have taken advance of the scholarships offering, and they, and they continue to maintain their advisor staffing levels. Facilities, county facilities, they're currently, the current work for facilities is focusing on setting up the courtroom and the fairgrounds. They are also testing installed air purifiers, they've been doing that recently, and once that testing is completed, they will move ahead with adding, or installing additional units. And then the Central Oregon Childcare Micro Center, last week, they issued an RFQ, and it will be out for response for three weeks. So that's, that's a brief update, but I, let me know if you have any questions, or if there's anything here that we're not quite answering, but I'll, I'll plan to use this basic format to communicate the status of CRF funds moving forward.
Thank you, Greg.
We do have one request, from, a new request that just came in today, and this is from the Ben Chamber, and it's for business resiliency grants, and you should have a copy of the proposal in hand by now, I think you should, or it's down there.
We have it available, yeah, it was just handed to us by Tom Anderson.
Okay, and we have Katie Brooks and Carolyn Egan on the line. Samantha, if you can patch them through, and you can probably stop, stop sharing my screen. There we go.
Hi.
Good afternoon, still.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. So, Greg, if I, do you want me to just launch into what it is we're proposing?
Yes, that would be great, thank you.
Great. By way of background, we are working with the City of Bend, and getting basically coronavirus relief funds out to businesses who have lost money, business, et cetera, incurred costs because of close downs, or because of reduced business, because of the pandemic. And we launched this program a few weeks ago. We put an RFP out, or a request for applications, out to businesses in Bend, this is for Bend specifically. And we have a million dollars to give away in form of grants, we call it the resiliency grants. And we left it out there for three weeks, and closed it just last week with 242 applications and 4.5 million dollars in requests for assistance. So, I got to tell you, this has been pretty heartbreaking on behalf of the staff at the Chamber and the selection committee, who are members of different industry sectors around Bend and the region, to help us sort through how to divvy out this money. So the grants are from, if you're zero to five FTEs, it's up to $7,000, if you're five to 25. Full-time equivalents, it's up to $25,000. And then 25 to 50 FTEs is a $50,000 request. About 80% of the folks who've applied have asked for the full amount in their FTEs category, and some are asking for less, just because they've either had another grant, or they want to make sure there's enough to go around. The fact of the matter is, there is not enough to go around. We knew this going in, that it was going to be tough. And so I'm presenting this information to you on behalf of the Chamber, but also, it's not our money, it's the city's money, that we're just getting out there for them. If there is any wiggle room and additional funding specific to financial assistance to businesses who are really hurting out there, we could use as much money as you could send our way with a pre-vetted list of businesses who are waiting. There'll be a lot of them that don't receive the funds. We're probably going to be finished with selection of our allocation of the $1 million mark, probably in the next two to three weeks, and getting it out the door, and then sending the, I'm sorry, notes out to the rest of the folks who we can't fund. So the request is, if there is some additional financial leeway that you folks have in your CRF funds, that we have this list that's ready to go and a lot in need, and we wanted to present this opportunity to you, should you want to go down that path. Carolyn, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think I just wanted to add, for the Commissioners to understand, you'll know, I mean, we have 200 individual businesses in Deschutes County, about 75% of them are in the City of Bend, and about 80% of the county's employment is in the City of Bend. So I know there's you, this commission has been really fantastic about a lot of equity countywide, and making sure that all the communities in Central Oregon get their fair share. I think in this instance, one of the reasons to bring this proposal to you is that we do, one, we know that we'll have businesses in the queue, ready to get the money out, and so we won't be pushing up against the deadlines, and we won't wind up seeing any of this money go back to the state, or back to the US Treasury. But two, just for us all to get a good sense of, that Deschutes County's economic recovery really does depend on these businesses that happen to be located within the city limits of Bend, being around for the recovery. And these grants really are a way to keep those businesses open, keep their employees going to work, so that when we are ready to enter Phase 3, we have a chance at recovery for Deschutes County. So I think that's just sort of a more broad pitch to the commission, to, if there are dollars that remain or are unused from other allocations, that this would be a terrific way to support the whole county's recovery. Thanks so much for the chance to say that.
So Carolyn, did any of these get PPP money then? The 242, was that a qualify?
Some of them will have, and that's one of the, you'll remember, Commissioner Dare, that's one of the things about the CARES money, is they have to tell us if they got a PPP loan, what they used it for, and then they have to say that they're going to, they have to explain to us how they're going to use these funds for something different. And what we know about the PPP is that many of the businesses use that to hang on for the summer, and as we go into the fall, they still need additional, access to additional grant funds to be able to hang on for the long term.
And you said 75% of the 242 applicants you have are from the City of Bend, is that correct? No?
Point of clarification, so there are 9,200 businesses, 9,200 privately owned businesses in the county.
Yes.
75% of them happen to be located in the city limit of Bend. So a big bulk of the county's businesses happen to be in the Bend city limit. That's my, that's my...
Okay, so, but are the 242 that you're looking at, are those all from Bend?
Correct, yep.
They're all Bend?
Yep, the original proposal that the Ben Chamber offered was because the City of Bend put a million dollars towards these funds. That was the only funding source for the original application process, and so we're asking with this proposal, that the county contribute to that, that fund.
Okay, so it's an average of 18,600, and that's for the 4.5 million? But then, if everyone just split up the million, they'd only get 4,100, is what I, I mean, you know, what is going to really save someone in order to give them some breathing room?
You know, you're... Commissioner really hit the nail on the head. We really took a long time assessing how do we divide this money up? How thin does the peanut butter go? And the fact of the matter is, if you go too thin, most people won't find it useful. So that's why we scaled the amount, according to how large the business is, how many people are employed by that business, and scaled it up, so if you're a larger employer who's got a larger workforce, you have access to more funding.
Carolyn and Katie, thanks for bringing this to us. You know, you sometimes are checking in on our meetings, but, you know, we've really been talking about this concern with business related to COVID, kind of lockdowns and shutdowns, et cetera, since March. And if you heard any of our prior meeting today, we were talking about it again with our health director, because it just seems like we're not getting very far with, I mean, we're now, we're in a little, we're in upswing these two weeks, so, and we have a concern this, this could go on for months, like it's been, and if we don't, and they're actually talking about other lockdowns, but to the, to the point here, a couple of questions I had, or a couple of things I want to mention. I don't know how much the city's been involved with the Chamber, but, you know, we had a real struggle with the governor's office as county association, trying to get more of the CARES money to us. We could have, the amount that we should have gotten proportionally would have covered this whole 4 million that you're talking about. I mean, that's, there was, we probably should have gotten $30 million between the county and the city for things. We got, you've seen our chart, we've gotten six, and I'm not sure, I think the city got three or four. I remember they made this decision early, but that's just, any of you that have influence at that level, that's something to keep in real, in mind, because that's how they did it in Washington State. So, just FYI, that we've been very active as Commissioners, and we just, I don't know, our, our Association of Counties couldn't get much movement on either, until we finally, they did release the amount, so we could in one fell swoop do it. The question I had is, have you heard anything more about the Business Oregon money that, at least a few weeks ago, COIC was talking to us about, which was also kind of business grants? Because I thought it was like $20 million to be spread through the county, so that was a big number that could come to, you know, a million dollars to us if we had our 5% or something. I haven't heard a word about that, and I don't know if Business Oregon's still going to do that, but it was, it was another direction with CARES money that the state had done through Business Oregon, so that's one thing to think about for this program.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah.
One of the things that we've run into, and I think you may have heard this a little bit, probably from Scott Acock in one of those review committees, is that what we were finding, unfortunately, is that Business Oregon was putting additional requirements on those funds, that was making it hard for, for businesses in our whole region.
Well, yeah, the four, the first group of that funding, which was, I think, 600,000 for the whole county or something, that had a lot of restrictions, if they had any federal money, they couldn't get it, et cetera. But he was talking about another 20 million, that he thought they were going to loosen all those restrictions, and, and it was for exactly what you're doing here, just another source of funds. I don't know where it is, Scott hasn't, that I know have sent an email to those of us that were helpful. Some of us were involved in actually figuring out the program, and writing the text, and all that stuff. But yeah, that'd be, do you know any more about that, or have you heard that part of it?
I don't know about the next round of funding. I know, as you alluded to, that Scott Acock was trying to work directly with Business Oregon to make sure those funds flowed more smoothly.
Yeah. And, you know, in my view, if, it would be fine for the City of Bend and the Ben Chamber to also, I mean, COIC's in that position, because they do a lot of this kind of thing, but I know they had problems staffing it last time, and so we actually had a county employee that joined that effort, but your program could be another, I'm just saying, that could be another place where it goes directly to you, if wanted to be.
I think two things happened. One is that Business Oregon sort of decided who they were going to give money to, and said you were going to be the responsible organization for the region, and we didn't have a chance to pitch for that.
Oh.
Or we decided as a region, that if we're going to do this as a region, there should be a regional entity that does that.
Oh.
To make a distinction between what Katie and I are saying today, and all those other programs, we were just, wanted to make you all aware that if we were in a timing standpoint where we were pushing up against the deadline for the county's CARES funds to get out to the neck of our community, this Chamber program would be a vehicle.
Yeah. Well, I'm supportive of that, and I, we can ask Greg again, but it seemed like we had $150,000 we hadn't done anything with yet.
No, we now have 284,000.
And then, well, but we have 150 that we've originally allocated for business use, that was, if I'm not mistaken, was not allocated to an organization, so that would be one place we could get it, and then we could get some of this remaining, like you said, 200...
84,000.
84,000, how many dollars? No, I'm kidding. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, kidding. 284,000 more. So, so is that, are you, I'm supportive of those, at least part of, all of the 150 and part of the 284 myself, because I think this is a great and needed program.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking in the scope of $250,000 may be an easy conclusion for what we have now and possibly more. There's going to be other requests and we are going to kind of whittle it down to the last, you know, how, how do we get the last bit out the door, but it'll be smaller and smaller amounts.
Yes, well, I actually, I have, I've got to go to something right now on, it's Central Oregon Campaign for Equal Justice, which I feel is really important. So I would hope we could perhaps discuss this and other items this afternoon to make a decision. Would that be okay? Or do you want to, you want to make a motion now, but I, I definitely, I don't want to, I want to get on my equal justice call because I do want to be there. I was there.
Say I mentioned an amount if we're comfortable with that amount.
Well, I'm comfortable with that amount if, if it's clear, if it's clear from Greg that that 150 that was on our chart, which we don't have here, but.
We don't have the chart, we don't have, I want to see it, actually, I would like to see it and that he has nothing beside it.
Well, I guess we could ask, so Carolyn and Katie, we were talking about maybe postponing our actual final decision until we come back, we re.
This afternoon.
Well, this afternoon.
One o'clock is.
Let's do that instead.
Do you mind?
Can you sign back in or stay on hold for that long?
Okay.
I do want to go to my equal justice Zoom call.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll step in here. So this is the CARE Act funding update agenda item. The request has been put in by the Ben Chamber Commerce, great discussion just now. And an amount was definitely floated at this point in time, but we're going to bring it back. We're going to have a recess until one o'clock today. We have a few other agenda items. So this will come up at the end of the meetings, what I'm thinking, but it could be about two or three o'clock this afternoon. But yeah, we may be able to get there today.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you so much for considering this, really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for the participation and the great work you're doing, really putting a process together to get these dollars out the door and support our businesses. And we all do want to support those businesses.
Good to see you.
Okay, so at this time we'll have a recess till one o'clock.
It'd be good to.
We're close.
We need to convene our afternoon session for the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners, September 30th, 2020. And I believe we're joined by Todd Cleveland and Nick Leelak. So thank you so much for being here.
Madam Chair, I could do a little introductory comment. Remember, this was a, just a work session request from about a month ago. Let's take a look at just kind of the lay of the land, the, the big picture, groundwater protection in the rural county, septic systems opposed to sewer systems inside of cities or urban unincorporated communities. So that's truly my request today. Todd Cleveland and I were able to talk last week, just kind of scoping out the thoughts of what could be shared. Commissioner Henderson, you mentioned something about, thought we put that to bed and that was good that I'm like, oh, well, it's groundwater protection, well-maintained septic systems and residential knowledge about how the system works and interaction with groundwater and protecting drinking water. It's something that's never going to go away. It's just something you always need to manage over time, especially as we're seeing more rural development. We've always seen some, but like there's a spike of people wanting to leave other places on the West Coast possibly, wanting to come to central Oregon and so the last parcels that are existing and buildable are starting to be really scooped up. So that's just putting a scope on what I was thinking when I asked for this session today.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So Todd Cleveland with the Community Development Department, Environmental Soils. Here to give you an update, it's a huge amount of information that I'm trying to, over decades, that I'm trying to boil down and give you a summary. And so anytime that commissioners, if you would want additional information, I'd be more than happy to come and meet with you. Because we have coordinated and partnered with Oregon DEQ over this issue for the entire time of the projects, going all the way back to the 90s. Eric Nigg, the DEQ Eastern Region Manager is online, available for us. And also I think Sean Rochette, who is the onsite wastewater specialist in the Eastern Region as well. We frequently work with this, this group. And as an agent of the state, Deschutes County is a contract county to implement the onsite wastewater program, which is part of what I wanted to talk about today. So as you can see, Eric Nigg's online and that's Sean Rochette. So I was going to give you a summary of some of the rural wastewater infrastructure in Deschutes County, kind of where those are, what they are, how that kind of led to concerns in South Deschutes County. Some of the, and it led eventually to scientific studies, several of them. It also created the new neighborhood that's in the city of Lepine now, where there's some existing new development occurring. There was a DEQ steering committee in 2013. It finalized and issued a report and we'll talk about that a little bit. Some of the recommendations, some of the funding mechanisms to provide financial assistance for our groundwater efforts and kind of where we're headed. So I'll go on to the next.
So one note, so we've got the, you know, kind of Southern Deschutes County review that was from back in the day, so 1999 and, you know, the big picture. But also there's the concept this is all the rural properties. It isn't just Southern Deschutes County. Southern Deschutes County was a study area, regional problem solving terminology was used. It was a defined area for, you know, this new neighborhood project to transfer some development credits, all that. But my point is it's always going to be rural too. And this, this is rural relative to the state of Oregon. Anybody that's outside of city does not have septic system. So, you know, it fits everywhere. I mean, not everything will, but some of the, the big picture is.
Absolutely. And I'm going to show you an image right here about our rural areas in Deschutes County.
There you go.
Every little brown dot.
Did you guys plan this?
Yeah, I was, he's a half a step ahead of me.
Every little brown dot is a septic system that's been permitted in the history of Deschutes County. We estimate between 25 and 30,000 existing systems. As you see, they're mostly in rural areas. There are some within city limits. You know, some people in this room are familiar with, they don't even have a septic system in there in the city limits. So, you know, it, it's scattered all over. We have thousands of them, but you will notice that there's a large density in South Deschutes County, which is part of the issue that, that I was going to discuss today. But I'm going to talk about what septic systems are. So, you know, they're onsite wastewater treatment. We don't call them septic systems anymore because we're treating the wastewater, we're like a little wastewater treatment plant. It's not just a septic tank and drain field, which is, there's a picture there. We do a lot of those. But over time, we've advanced technologies and we fully treat the wastewater so it's easier to get rid of. In central Oregon, we have very shallow soils. So that system that's in the upper right-hand corner with the flowers on it, that's called a cap and fill, that was kind of invented for central Oregon because of our poor soil conditions, shallow to rock, you know, the basalt, basalt rocks. So they're shallow trenched, conventional systems. Most of these are conventional systems. The one with the, the filter there is an alternative treatment technology that's a more advanced system. And then there's a mounded system that's a sand filter. And they all have a septic tank. So because of thousands of lots that were created in the 60s and 70s in South Deschutes County through subdivisions that were all going to be served with onsite wastewater systems and wells, there was a significant concern. And there was a study in 1982 in the core of Lepine where they had high nitrates. That's how they ended up getting sewer. In 1994, the DEQ went out into the rural area and, and checked wells and so forth and found nitrates in the rural area as well. So that led to some of the regional problem solving that Commissioner DeBohn mentioned. And eventually to a Lepine demonstration project, a five and a half million dollar grant to study alternative treatment systems, the groundwater conditions, what's going on, a model, try to figure out what is going to happen. Is it really at risk? How much capacity does it have? Once that was done and completed, it led us to the groundwater protection project, which created the local rule. The local rule was approved in 2008, then repealed in 2009. Once that was, once that happened, the county commissioners at the time asked DEQ to take over the project and, and move forward. And they did the Northern Clamas, Southern Deschutes Groundwater Steering Committee. And that's, Eric Nigg was involved with that. And that was finalized in 2013. So I'm going to review some of that information. But like I mentioned before, we have lots of rural lots in the subdivision, many rural lots in the, in the rural community of Deschutes County, but particularly in South Deschutes County. And so we have volcanic soils, all these volcanoes here. They're thin, poorly developed, over a shallow water table, very high density developments. 61% of the lots are less than an acre, 84% are less than two acres. And they're all next to each other and they all have wells and septics. So 50% of those wells are less than 50 feet deep, 82% are less than 100 feet deep. And so the highest quality water is that shallow water. That's what everybody wants, fantastic water, but it's also very susceptible. So it led to the studies, Lepine Demonstration Project, which was a coordinated project between Oregon DEQ, USGS and Deschutes County, where we did well sampling, drinking water wells, we installed monitoring wells, DEQ did. We looked at alternative wastewater treatment systems to try to remove nutrients and contaminants of concern to try to make it better treatment systems. USGS did a lot of field studies, they looked at wells, they did testing. And then they created, with all that data, USGS created several models and reports that we used moving forward to try to create solutions or options. So what was learned is that groundwater, which is the primary drinking source for the area, is susceptible, is vulnerable. Nitrate found in the groundwater is from septic systems. So that was done in an isotope study with the USGS. Nitrates in the groundwater are increasing very slowly. It was much more of a slow-moving system than what was originally believed. This information demonstrated that it's very slow to increase. And about 46 milligram per liter of nitrate reaches the groundwater from each system. The safe drinking water standard is 10. So that's way above safe drinking water levels and most people use drinking water wells.
So is the water going to taste off?
No, it, it doesn't. It looks clear. Can't taste it, nitrate's not. It's just a, it's a clear.
How often do you have to have your water tested?
So you should probably have it tested annually for nitrates and bacteria.
You should, but are you required to?
You're not. There is a time of transfer in all of central Oregon. All the wells have to be tested for nitrates and bacteria when you sell your property. The property owner needs to do that. We have, you know, Terrebonne, there's lots of wells all over the county that have to go through that. So this was a, this, this image is an example, I think it's about 2003, of the USGS drilled a bunch of wells in a transect in a line to different depths. Grabbed those samples, it's about 2,400 feet wide, this image. And those are individual plumes of nitrate contamination in the oxic layer of the groundwater. So where there's really.
Are you calling a plume, where you've got kind of odd shaped configurations, you know, I see you got a key here. So you've just kind of measured these plumes or you found out in these particular wells, there's a light blue amount, then there's a dark blue?
Those are based on the concentration that they found in those, those geoprobes wells that they drilled basically at one time.
Are these, are these wells still there?
This was a one-time kind of event. We do have wells that I, that were on that previous image that are out there. Many of them are still available for sampling, there are shallow monitoring wells in the right-of-way. A few of the wells that were associated with this transect may be available. The way to think about this is that there, this, these plumes are coming from existing conventional systems like a standard system. That's, that's accumulating in the aquifer, that part of the aquifer and spreading. And this was in 2003. And that's continuing, you know, most of those places still have a standard system. So they're still, still flushing, they're still using their system, still going into the groundwater. So there's ongoing loading that's occurring. So they used that information and created a model. You know, the model was a prediction that continued use of existing systems was going to result in this image on the right, which this is really close to the water table. It was going to take over 100 years for it to reach this level. It was going to continue to increase until about 2139, that was going to level off. That's if nothing happened and every lot was built on with a conventional system. So that's not happening today, but that was what was modeled. So, you know, this is worst case scenario, broad areas of the groundwater would exceed 10 milligrams per liter, you know, in the future, and that's exceeding the, the safe drinking water standard. This groundwater then flows toward the little Deschutes and the, the big Deschutes River and discharges in most areas that feeds the, feeds the rivers. It's called a gaining river. So one of the things, one of the big takeaways was that alternative treatment technologies during the demonstration project were shown that they can treat wastewater to a very high level, can reduce nitrogen and provide us a tool to allow for more development, better sustainable development over long term. There are several rules that apply to us. One is 130 number one, it tells us that we have to protect all water resources from public health hazards. So because this safe drinking water standard of 10, we know that the groundwater is accumulating nutrients, that over time, if we don't reduce that, we could endanger people's wells. So the reason, that's the reason that we're trying to protect their well, their drinking water from the accumulating nitrogen. And in addition, there's a groundwater protection standard that says all groundwater in the state shall be protected from pollution for, to, to allow for future beneficial use of that water. And our groundwater is fantastic. So it's very easy to contaminate it. And so that's another reason that we are obligated to protect the groundwater to the best of our ability.
Do you have any idea how many of these alternate ATT systems have been put in over the last 10 years or?
Well, in, in South Deschutes County, probably about 650. Other parts of the county, about 350. So about 1,000 total. But there, there's, I mean, literally probably four inspections today of those systems going in in South County. We get them in Tumalo, there's, Tumalo has some of the similar conditions to this and areas out by Sisters as well, very high density lots with rapidly draining soils.
Little parcel next to my house, used to have this A-frame in the woods and it was all wooded over and a person bought it and they've been slowly improving it, put a shop on it, cleaned up the front of the property, put a fence around it, and now there's a nitrate reducing septic system on the property. So it's just funny, these, these little spots where you just think it's nothing and all of a sudden it's a beautiful parcel with a nice building and a turnaround and you put grass in. So that's, it's a function of development, have, being able to put in a septic system.
Yeah, and, and these systems have also made it, they facilitated development on some properties as well because the lots may be very limited. This allows for a smaller footprint for the septic system so people can do more with their property.
I had a system like this at our house, from the second house we built. And I, I, that thing was always, the red light was flashing. Yeah, I was not really thrilled with it. I was always calling Eli. So, yeah.
Was it one of these? So, so I got to say, we have a great number of these and they've been very reliable. This is an Oregon company, it's called Arinco, that's who builds this system that we're looking at on this image.
So what's the guarantee, what's the warranty? How long do these?
They have a two-year warranty. They have a two-year warranty that's required by state code. They have to have ongoing maintenance for the life of that system until it's shut off. There's annual reporting required to us. We constantly have, we send that out annually. We do have enforcement cases where that comes up. Matter of fact, I know I've sat in Commissioner DeBohn's office with someone on the phone about that before. So it's in order to maintain these systems. If you maintain these systems, they've been very reliable over time. It would be nice if we had more technologies available to us that are proven nitrogen-removal systems. And, and, you know, we're working with the state, and I know that some people at the state have been communicating with other manufacturers as well that would maybe look at coming into Oregon, but they haven't yet. There's a process to do that. So the DEQ, these are listed by Oregon DEQ, then we can permit them for use.
You know, as a builder, when you put them in, they make you nervous because of the lights and the, it's just, you don't think of them the same as other systems where you done, and you leave it alone and fix it when you're plugged up. This is, it's more like a furnace or something.
Yeah, a little bit of maintenance.
Change the filter, and get somebody to inspect it, but they're, yeah.
Constantly.
It's more sophisticated, and it does require more service and maintenance and care. But what it does do is that you can see when there's something going wrong. A lot of conventional systems may have a problem that you don't see for a long time until it's a catastrophic problem, which, those are fun. I've got pictures of catastrophic problems if you want to see those. Probably don't want to see those. But they, they do happen, and it can be very difficult to fix, and it does expose everyone, including all the people trying to work on it, to health hazards. These systems are kind of smart, and you can detect a problem before it becomes a major concern or a public health hazard. So that leads us to kind of how it links back to the regional problem solving and the new neighborhoods, steering committee recommendations. So the new neighborhood was created from a act of Congress granted to Deschutes County. And we took that, that land, and it was intended to help with the groundwater quality. You know, there were areas of high water table, other issues where there's, some of these lots are denied, we can't approve them, they don't meet criteria for a septic system, there's wildfire hazards. So part of the intent was to reduce development in the rural community, get it to develop inside the city of Lapine on a sewer system. Well, during the Lapine Demonstration Project, we kind of learned that that's not the best way to solve some of the groundwater issues, and we could use some of these, these for, you know, we needed to help retrofit existing systems that are out in the rural community, and figured out a way to go from TDCs, which was the Transfer Development Credit, to Collusion Reduction Credits and Financial Assistance. So that's, that's a huge component of the new neighborhood, is to provide financial opportunities for us to help the community in various ways, financial assistance with some of these issues and items.
I got a call from a new resident recently, and they were, they're on the edge of BLM, and they were just asking about, you know, all the people, some people setting up kind of long-term out there this summer. So, but I was able to stop by, talk to him, I noticed he had a new nitrate-reducing system. He said, oh, yeah, next door, we bought two parcels. The one has a development, development credits were sold, or, you know, he didn't understand the system, which is what we're referring to right here. I was able to explain to him a little bit, just a little bit of the backstory, but then also a rebate, a credit for putting that system in. So the installer, and I, you know, I don't know exactly what the message is right now to installers from the county, but the installer hadn't mentioned it, so there was no application. But there's a credit in place right now for people putting these systems in. So, yeah, I mean, that was just a couple of weeks ago. It's just amazing how it came around.
I have some information, I have some, I have some information about that. So, you know, so the TDC program was the Transfer Development Credit, where it was trying to stop the development in the rural community and put it into the new neighborhood. So then the steering committee from DEQ met and made a number of recommendations. They did acknowledge that, yes, there's a developing hazard here, and action needs to be taken. You know, they, they wanted, they made several recommendations. I'm going to focus on a couple here. The first one was they wanted to seek an exception to Goal 11 for a large area of Southern Deschutes County, which Goal 11 is a land-use goal, which I don't, I'm going to, looking at Nick. But it basically allows or prohibits city infrastructure, like sewers, in the rural community or rural areas. And so the idea was to get an exception to that so that we could put sewer systems, or there would be an opportunity to put sewer systems in the rural area. Well, and the county supported that along with DEQ, and that was remanded by Luba in 2016, and since then, there hasn't been a lot of activity moving forward with that. Number two was that the steering committee wanted the DEQ to conduct and pursue funding for ongoing groundwater monitoring, to allow better understanding what's going on with the water system, and where things are a problem, or where things are working, based on what we're doing with the, with the ATT systems. So that hasn't really happened either. That was always a part of the goals from the Lapine Demonstration Project, from the groundwater protection project. It requires, you know, like a hydrologist to come up with a plan. We would need funding for that. And we've partnered with DEQ, I think in 2012, we did a sampling event. Because the groundwater is so slow, the accumulation is so slow, you know, doing these on the order of decades makes sense, doing a regular, routine, you know, sampling of specific wells, maybe every ten years or so, makes a lot of sense to see where we're at. If we do it too frequently, it may not be very helpful, spends a lot, costs a lot of money. I think Eric Nigg has a better handle on how much that might be. DEQ Lab did most of the, the processing of, of the samples.
Well, this is the exact item that brought me, oh, we, we need to look into, when are we going to sample next? That's exactly how I brought it up here a couple of weeks ago, to say, let's talk about this. So this was the concept. I do have a map in my office, got three and four points over time, because there was more, there was monitoring, you know, I don't know the dates, but it was faster than ten years. There was about three times in twelve years or something.
Yeah, and I think it's probably a little, we didn't do, because of resources, there wasn't, we weren't able to do a huge number of wells.
Yeah, the numbers are going down.
It would have been better to do more. Over the past, we did as many as four hundred.
Yeah. So as I say, this, this kind of is that point, you know, either is it time to do another set of well testing, or set a date for the next set of well testing? I remember last time, as I say, Deschutes County, myself in office, knowing the, the big story here, we offered to say, let's do a set of well testing, and we'll help pay for it. And then in the end, I think DEQ ended up paying for it anyway, so there was, we had resources to be able to do that. But we had triggered that well testing round in 2000, when was the last?
I think it was 2012, unless I'm totally off.
2012 was the last time?
Yeah, so we're, we're coming up on that ten years, and it takes, there's a lot of, it's staff resource time, the sampling, scheduling things. If we're going to access people's properties, there's a lot of-
Yeah, it's a project.
Lot of a project, it takes a lot of time to get, to coordinate it, plan it, and then pay for all the time and the cost of processing the samples at the lab, you know.
But there's, you know, the community education and knowledge base will grow from a project like this also. If residents get contacted, they know that the well testing is happening. Because, as I say, I, I remember the big picture is, everything's great, and you're real confident, and things are going to go fine, and we're going to maintain our septic systems. But the day that somebody loses confidence in their groundwater, you know, I turn my tap on it, and I'm hesitant to drink it, then we have a problem. So, as I say, whatever that looks like. So having people just understand that it's a monitored situation over time.
And our goals were always to try to prevent it from getting to the point where it was-
Aren't, aren't people able to put in filtering systems in their houses to eliminate that?
And eliminate certain things, it's quite expensive. There's reserve-
Meaning thousands, or?
I believe so, I don't know. I mean, of course, these things change, and I don't deal with that very often.
We do that in-
Also wouldn't protect that resource, which is part of what we're required to protect. But they could protect their drinking water with reverse osmosis. Or another component that was discussed by the steering committee was having public water systems, where you had a well that was in a protected area that you would use, and that's what people would give for their drinking water.
I was thinking about that when we were, because the big discussion when I started was the, the issue of doing large wastewater system. It's like, well, if, really what you're trying to do is get clean drinking water, why don't you put smaller pipes, and there, do something, it seems like that'd be cheaper than a sewer, sewage disposal plant or something.
The sewer system is quite expensive.
Yeah.
These onsite systems, over time, it's, it's, it's less expensive, it's more independent, individual responsibilities, right? But public water systems were always discussed. I know these well samplings, like Commissioner DeBohn was talking about previously, because it, they, the DEQ sampled some wells into Northern Klamath County as also, and I know that Bob Baggett dealt with some contamination issues on private drinking water wells from a pesticide. So, and Eric Nigg would probably know more about that than I do. But I know Bob spent a lot of time, once they found that, they had to talk to the property owners. They were very, I think they were probably happy they found that out, without, you know, it led to some other issues. But that, those are the kinds of things that, it gives us an opportunity to communicate with our citizens as well, you know, in the community, to make sure that they're, they're, not being exposed to something that they wouldn't want to drink. You can't see it or taste it, but it's not good for you.
Well, and we also have a nitrogen-limited river system, so any groundwater that percolates through gets the algae blooms in the river. So, I mean, there's other environmental reasons why you kind of want to keep an eye on this also.
That's another component of the USGS information, is that there were parts, the river is a gaining river, there are locations where there's oxic water, so there could be contaminated water, get to the river, and that would be a concern, because it's a nitrogen-limited water system. So the, the big issue for that, a big take-home that I recall from the USGS information, is Dave Morgan used to say that, based on his information, that if we take some of these actions by reducing the nutrients, the loading in the neighborhoods, that provides a lot of protection for the river system, because there are natural protections for the river system in a lot of places. They didn't study the river system very closely, and of course, there's the TMDL process with DEQ, and I don't know where that's at right now. It's the total maximum daily load to the river system. What can it handle without having problems? What's the condition of the water for fish? Things like that. That is definitely not my strong suit. But, like we were talking about with the groundwater program, so the Groundwater Financial Assistance Program, it's called Fund 296, that's groundwater partnership funds. We are using some of those. And it's connected to the new development, you know, in the new neighborhood, it's generating funds that go into Fund 296 as part of the Pollution Reduction Program. And, something's wrong with that slide. So let me go to the next one. So these programs, let's see what it says. That slide didn't work.
Well, what it says is that there's, funds are used to preserve water quality in open space in Southern Deschutes County, the South County Sewer Feasibility Study, Goal 11 exception, financial assistance and neighborhood-
Yeah, exactly.
Neighbor Impact loans.
We provided financial assistance for the, a sewer feasibility study that was associated with expanding the Sun River sewer system. Tom worked on that. We helped with Goal 11 accession, exception process and planning.
The transportation, yeah, we had to conduct a transportation planning rule study, so we did.
We also provide financial assistance to property owners. When they upgrade an existing system, you know, a lot of times that's when the system's failing, that's a surprise to you. We do have a rebate process for when they put in and upgrade their system, that's called a re, nitrogen onsite wastewater treatment system rebate, that just rolls off the tongue.
So how much is that?
That's $3,750, and that's what Commissioner DeBohn was talking about, someone that he knew in South County that received one of those when they upgraded an old system on a property. And we also provide, through Neighbor Impact, non-conforming loan program.
And we've done that a few times. People that are, have a failing system, don't have any resources to deal with it, Neighbor Impact will provide this loan against, you know, a title of the house, you know, a loan backed by the title. So we've done that a few times over the years. And it's really, it's good to be able to keep that, you know, usually older couple in that house and stabilize instead of, because condemning a property or selling the property for redevelopment is the only other option.
It's kind of, when we get to that point, it's almost the point of last resort for property owners.
Yeah.
It's provided that way, because there are other conventional programs that have been available for financial assistance. You know, people can go to a bank and get a loan, or they can go to Neighbor Impact and get another kind of loan. And there was also Craft III for a while, but they've had to shut down their program because they lost funding from the state legislature. And we had that program for a while where people could get a loan through Craft III for clean water loans.
And actually, there was someone who hadn't had water for seven weeks, and the woman who runs the Rotary Program in Sun River, Lapine, put together a fundraiser, and we were able to raise the money for someone. So it was great to see they had not had any, you know, water at their house for seven weeks. So the well got fixed, the pumping people got paid, yes.
Neighbor Impact does that a lot of times.
Right. They just didn't have any, you know, it was-
Times are even, it's becoming a challenge, and I do have some concerns. We may be, this fund may be one of the only sources of financial assistance for people for a while because of the state of our, you know, economy and everything else, so.
But you actually did see that they changed their numbers, the economic forecast, they forgot that everyone was going to pay their taxes in July, and so the state is actually not, it's not so desperate as it was.
Not as bad as we thought it was going to be.
No, by a couple billion, I believe. Just a good, just a couple.
So on this slide, you'll see that we've assisted ninety-four, we've provided ninety-four rebates to people. That's up to $345,000. That's, you know, that's significant assistance. It's almost like that treatment unit, you got it, you got a coupon for it, right? You get a rebate for putting in that treatment unit. We've helped, you know, there's been thirteen property owners assisted with the non-conforming loan program. And, you know, hopefully, we will, we do have funds that are at Neighbor Impact that are available, that are in that fund. I haven't, I haven't had contact for a while on, on new potential loans. I guess people have found other methods to get funding so far, but those are things that I'm always kind of paying attention to. Neighbor Impact will contact me with that process, and there's a process because the county, it's county money that, that county is associated with signing off on those loans as well.
Does that rebate program go out to builders with the building permit package or whatever for a new, you know, when you're doing a big remodel or?
It's when you're doing a remodel and you have to upgrade. We've tried to provide that to people, yes. I don't know that it's going out with permits, because our electronic permit system doesn't really, it's not set up for that, really. But what I've, we provide it on our website, I provide it to the contract. So what, what I've been doing is providing this information to the installers, the septic installers, and that's how most people find out about it, and they know when to ask. And I think that's what Commissioner DeBohn was talking about, is I've made sure that the installers know about this program, and, and when we want to use that is when people are needing to upgrade their systems. But new systems are exempt, they, they need to, they've got to buy their own system. And that was from feedback from the steering committees and the Financial Advisory Committee. So some of the funds, this is a summary of the funds for Fund 296, and with the new neighborhood, with the development, the reserve in the Pines, new development, we're projecting that that's going to generate some funds coming in, into the, into Fund 296. And should all the proposed lots get developed, that could be as much as $290,000. So that could really help Fund 296, you know, where we could utilize that for assisting homeowners with low-interest loans, with feasibility studies, with a monitoring program as well. So, next steps, right? We're going to continue putting in the ATTs, we're going to continue providing financial assistance to people. We want to continue coordination with DEQ on how we're going to implement these steering committee recommendations. committee recommendations. You know, that includes the groundwater monitoring program, any kind of innovations in technology, changes in rules that allow us to give us more tools for people. Coordinate with the city of Lapine on the, we didn't really talk about Fund 296, but that was also created. We expanded sewer in Lapine and provided a loan, and that's being paid back with SDCs as development occurs in the new neighborhood as well. And then, as brought up, we could reconvene the South County Groundwater Financial Advisory Committee. That was probably 2008, probably the last time we met with that, where a lot of our direction for how we would use these funds, that came from there. So as, if we have an increase in the funds and we have opportunities that we could provide to the community, we might want to convene that committee and get feedback on what people need. So, I think that's my presentation. Well, like I said, with the well program, with the sampling program, one of the, one of the slides that's on there, the images, shows the sampling locations from the Lapine Demonstration Project. That was monitoring wells and drinking water wells included on that. So there's over 400 well sites in South Deschutes County that we've sampled before that could be used, potentially used as sites moving forward.
Would you use the same 400 though, or would you go?
You would probably want to, you want to track the same wells because you want to see if there's a trend with that well. You don't want it changed. The only thing that you would see is that new groundwater is working its way toward that. So each year when the snow melts, there's a new layer added to the top of the groundwater, and then there's a well over here that's a straw in the ground that's pulling it out, right? So you're pulling groundwater. Over the time, the groundwater works down, so most of the well water that people are drinking is many decades old. Much of it predates any kind of development in the area, and that's why it's very high quality.
So you mentioned sisters, like our well is 650 to 700 feet deep?
You're probably safe.
Okay, well, I just.
There's probably a basalt.
Thought I should ask.
Probably a basalt layer there that's.
Is that what it is? Okay.
That whole plateau out there is that way, down Helms Road, and they're really deep.
Yeah, like, I went like, okay.
It's out, it's, the area is right around Wyche's Creek, for example, where it's very rapidly draining material. There's a water table there, the creek's there, people have wells. That area would be an area where that loading would occur. Tumalo, it's right by the Deschutes River, it's very gravelly soils. Those are examples.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Todd.
Good.
Chair.
Yes.
Hi, Derek. Our DEQ partners online might just want to provide some comments to supplement what Todd said and/or any other perspectives, such as Commissioner DeBonne's about groundwater monitoring and what they may be considering.
Yes. That would be excellent to hear from them.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you for being with us today.
Great, thank you, commissioners. I'm Eric Nigg, I'm Water Quality Manager for Eastern Region with the Department of Environmental Quality. And Sean Rochette is here with me. He's our new variance officer for Eastern Region, and he took Bob Baggett's position when he retired. Commissioner DeBonne had a long history with Bob, and we expect to have a long time with Sean working at his job. There are a couple of things that I would add from our perspective. One, it has been going on 10 years or close to since we monitored groundwater in the area. We don't currently have a plan for another monitoring round for the wells, but there isn't a reason that we can't get together and talk about that again and try and get something on the books. The last time we did make a plan coordinating the county resources with DEQs, and in the end, DEQ was able to take advantage of a slow period at the lab where the process that dealt with analyzing nitrates was open, and we were able to slip some samples in, and DEQ was able to cover the entire cost. Regardless of perhaps slightly better revenue forecasts, it's still a very difficult time for us to plan things at the moment. But, again, as Todd suggested, looking at this over the period of a decade or so probably makes sense. Another thing is, you know, we did work pretty hard, coordinated strongly with the county and with land conservation and development when we came forward with a proposal for a Goal 11 exception. And the concept was that multiple home systems could be installed that might more cost-effectively treat groundwater, or treat sewage to protect groundwater, and that could go all the way up to a large system, or it could be a neighborhood system, or it could be two homes together on one system. And everybody involved seemed to think that that might have a cost benefit. In the end, of course, that did not happen, and we don't have a Goal 11 as an exception. And so that is really the reason that there's, you know, probably, I don't know this, but probably almost all of the systems that are being installed now are alternative tech, treatment technologies that are more costly. And so, the idea was to try and spread the cost evenly among homeowners, where now we're kind of in a last come, first cost basis, where people are paying as they go. And these systems probably don't treat for nitrate as well as a system that treated multiple, multiple properties could. So, it, that was our intention, that was our hope, but of course, it didn't happen. And so, people who are developing, particularly in South County, are putting in a lot of these ATT systems. The other thing is regarding loans for septic system repairs, Craft III did run out of money. However, DEQ has recently changed some of the rules in its State Revolving Fund Loan Program. That's the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan, a loan fund. And that's federal money that comes through the state. We loaned it out to entities for wastewater improvements particularly. And there is now an opportunity for that fund to loan to entities like Craft III that are in the business of loaning to individual homeowners to repair their systems. So we do expect that going on in time, there will be money in that kind of a system, and it will be available to homeowners. And beyond that, I don't have anything to add. I appreciate the opportunity to meet with the commissioners, and if we can help or answer any questions, we're happy to do so.
One question, Eric, this is Tony DeBonne. Is there a time of year to do that groundwater testing?
Generally, it's in the wintertime, and that's, that's what we did, and it, I think it was the winter of 2011 to 12. And, you know, we want to get it when the conditions are the same as when we took the original samples.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a wintertime event. Yeah, because I kind of knew there was seasonal to it or something.
Yeah, yes, exactly, Commissioner DeBonne.
So this winter is probably kind of too quick, so we could aim for next winter, maybe?
Perhaps.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking, that'd be the goal.
That would be 10 years.
Yeah, that'd be the goal, you know, I'm just putting it out there. Let's make sure we're thinking like that, and just to set direction to it, that'd be for next year. And, you know, if we have, we're going to have a function of, you know, development and this neighborhood and revenue flowing, so once again, we may be able to partner financially, but that'll be a discussion for the county, you know, to help with, just getting a vision on a 10-year period.
Did Sean want to say anything today?
I'll just say hello. I'm kind of in a learning process as this is my new role here over in Bend. I've only been living here about six months or so, so I'm still learning a lot of things from Todd and Eric and about the projects that have been done in the past. I've talked with my predecessor, Bob Baggett, before he retired. And I just wanted to say that, you know, one of the things we're seeing in the South County area specifically is that I think the number of variance applications DEQ is seeing is possibly at an all-time high. I've personally been working on in the last six months or so, I've had probably 14 to 18 variance applications come in, and that's a direct result of the shallow groundwater conditions that exist in this South Deschutes County area. So it is, it is susceptible, there, you know, to me, I see that as an indicator of maybe there's increased development going on in this area, and it's an important thing to monitor closely, you know, because each house that gets built, each septic system that goes in is another drop in the bucket from a nitrate standpoint.
Thank you so much, Sean.
Can you help us with the variance process scenario, as in, somebody has a parcel, somebody said, oh, fine, they were going to build on Grandma and Grandpa's parcel, or whatever, and then I'll, and they go down a path and they find out what? I mean, I guess I don't have a feel for this. You know, well, how do you get to a variance request?
Sure. So it all starts with the county, with Todd and the Environmental Soils Division conducting a site evaluation for septic feasibility. So typically, these, these sites don't meet the minimum prescriptive standards established in Oregon administrative rules, so the sites are denied, essentially, these site evaluations, typically because the groundwater is too shallow, you know, after the spring melts. So from there, folks will typically get involved with some sort of consultant who is competent in soil science, groundwater, septic systems specifically. And they put together a very detailed proposal, so that might talk about the groundwater in the area, how sensitive of an area they're working in, if the lots are served by individual private wells, for example. And then ultimately, they're proposing some sort of modification to a standard design. In many cases, it's simply elevating a bottomless sand filter that one of these treatment technologies discharges to, to just kind of get a vertical separation above the groundwater. So they put together a proposal, and we end up having a hearing and notifying any surrounding neighbor properties. And it's really their job to prove why our rules are considered unreasonable or burdensome to adhere to. And then they either would be granted an approval or denial after that to construct a septic system.
Yeah. So I think, Todd, you pointed out one of those in Tumalo, a couple of years, we were in a ride-along, and you showed me that parcel, posted public sign saying we're going to have a hearing onsite, onsite hearing?
Yes.
So that was this scenario.
That was pre-COVID, and that was, Bob Baggett did that hearing, and that was because the lot size with the soil conditions in Tumalo, there was, there were wells also really.
Yeah, but that was a variance.
Yes.
Great, okay.
So, thank you, Eric, and thank you, Sean. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome to Central Oregon. Todd, how do we then gear up for then, like, testing the following winter, '21, '22? I mean, it'll be 10 years?
That would take a lot of coordination with DEQ, making a plan, what wells are we going to sample, communicating with property owners if we're going to need to sample people's drinking water wells. We have to coordinate with the DEQ lab, so there would be a, you know, a lot of partnership with DEQ. DEQ really kind of drives that process because they have the hydrologists, they, they're going to tell us where we should sample. And then we have the available monitoring wells and previously sampled drinking water wells. We'd have staff, we could contribute staff. Time, we could get trained to do sampling, which is what I've done that before, where we go out and grab samples and it can, you know, in the wintertime, you know, you're getting, I've been pelted with snow while I'm running freezing cold water all over myself. Really fun, it's awesome. So, it makes you, it, it makes you tough or something.
But we want the snow because we need the moisture.
Yes, absolutely.
Complaining about what? Water? Clean water?
Wonderful.
You grab that sample, and we have to pack them up and get them shipped off, you know, that day to the well, to the lab, most of the time, or we stabilize them, keep them cold. So there's a whole lot of coordination that's involved, and we have to get these samples done in a fairly timely manner, you know, so if you have too many, or any more people, more access, all these factors, and really, the hydrologists with DEQ could really, can really help us formulate that plan, and, you know, and with the right number of samples, where they're located, and we kind of create that. And I would like to just be able to have kind of an ongoing plan so that we could hopefully regenerate and continuously sample similar wells over time to kind of keep an eye on what's going on. But that's hopeful.
Nick, did you want to add something?
Thank you, Chair, Derek. I think if we come back in a couple of months, I'm really glad we're having the discussion now, especially with DEQ, because it may take them longer to just think it through, through their budget and their work plan. But if we come back in a couple of months, that will be literally at the start of our budgeting process for next fiscal year, our process to create our work plan for the next year, and we can then pull those pieces together, if that's the board's direction, and coordinate with DEQ this winter for the following winter, if that, if that's a good timetable for the commissioners. And again, I really appreciate Eric and Sean being here, so they can hear, and they can get a pretty, you know, maybe some sense that that may be where our commissioners want to go. So they can begin to think about that on their end as well.
Excellent. So we had 400 in the sample before. Would the sample have to be enlarged?
It wasn't that large. That was the maximum number of wells. If you look at all of our sampling points, there were about 400 different points. About 200 of those were monitoring wells, so they're sampling the shallow water. The other 200 were drinking water wells. We didn't sample all those every time. There were, the first time, we sampled a whole bunch, and then over time, they were, there were smaller batches that were done. Eric might be able to help with that information a little bit.
Well, and thank you, and I think that sample size is one thing, and I'll be honest, the last time we did it, we accommodated our available resources by reducing the number of samples we took. We have already developed our agency request budget for the next biennium, and that has gone to the governor, so it's too late for us to put this in as, for instance, a policy option package. But that doesn't mean that there isn't enough room within a DEQ budget to try and plan this in the next year or two. And so, I think what I'd like to do is, is see this as a request from the county, and I'll elevate it within DEQ up sort of my administrative line, and we'll start talking about it.
Yeah, great.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Eric. Well, I'm so glad.
That's great.
You pulled together this meeting, and thank you, Todd, for all your information.
So one other note, so the system development charge for City of Lapine and the, the debt associated with it. Well, yeah, so just, you know, the SDC. So as we're looking at the system development charges just on Monday, the fact that they put in a new transportation, the sewer one is kind of a bigger portion, and I'm just thinking the, there was a graphic that we were shown. I bet there's an opportunity in the next couple, three years to recalculate that SDC for the City of Lapine. And that's not our job as the county, but just a pointer, you know, at some point, is there an opportunity to reduce the system development charge for the city sewer system for future development? As I say, it's not even a county thing here, but I have a hunch that there's going to be an opportunity once the debt's removed and development is humming along.
Yeah, Commissioner DeBonne, and once, given the projected development activity in the new neighborhood over the next couple of years, we're confident that we'll have the revenues sufficient to pay off this, the, the City of Lapine has a loan to the county, and the county is paying off bonds, and the soonest we could pay that off would be January 1st of 2022, and I want to say the balance is about a half million dollars right now. So I just estimate '22, '23 is when there could be enough activity to pay that off. And when that's paid off, then 100% of the sewer SDCs go to the City of Lapine to then provide sewer as, to facilitate growth, so, or support growth.
Great.
Great.
Thank you for that financial information.
Thank you.
Interesting.
Great. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Tom, are you going to bring up the Redmond Urban Renewal Project?
Yeah, Greg's on the line too, happy to facilitate that. So, Commissioner, as you recall from the presentation last week from the City of Redmond staff, who went over the mechanics of their proposed urban renewal district, the project list, the timelines, the benefits, and the impact on our four county taxing districts in the area. We kind of set it, set it off. We honestly, myself, Greg. We honestly, um, myself, Greg, Dave, we didn't, we didn't, we heard, uh, kind of some mixed signals from you on, on, uh, whether you were going to want to take the same approach as you did with the City of Bend proposal, uh, or not. So, um, I, we, we left today open, we didn't prepare any draft resolution or letter or anything. We were hoping today for you to have a discussion among yourself and give us direction on what you'd like us to bring back for next week, which could include, for example, a resolution similar to what we did for City of Bend with the same kind of reasons. It could be a letter, doesn't have to be a resolution, there's no required mechanism for providing comment to, back to the City of Redmond. A, a letter expressing, you know, again, whatever sentiments or thoughts or suggestions that you might have, uh, going back to them, which we would, uh, draft and bring back next week for your consideration. You don't have to do anything, you know, you could say, thanks very much, it was interesting, we understand the mechanics and we choose not to comment. That is also possible. So all of those things are really, uh, up to you in terms of what you'd like to direct us to do, uh, in terms of preparing or not comments back to the city. So beyond that, we're happy to, you know, try and answer any questions that you had in your mind based on the material that was provided to you from, uh, from last week and, uh, and go from there.
Great.
So, uh, this is the, uh, yeah, Redmond Earl, Urban Renewal Proposal. Uh, part of it is, man, it is right on, uh, uh, growing, spurring the opportunity to add capacity southern part of the town, uh, the, uh, large lot industrial lands, uh, you know, roads, water and sewer, and I'm just thinking the big picture, I don't know if this is all in their plan, but roads. Well, no, this is my point, so roads, water and sewer, uh, getting down 19th Street. Now, there's some great things that could be built out down there. And the fire station is that one thing that sticks out in my mind, that's exactly it, you know, and, and I mentioned it before, shaving off some dollars from other, uh, taxing districts to put in an asset of a taxing district. And I guess that's the whole scenario of this whole thing. And it's different to spur growth is different than to restart in a blighted area. Uh, and, yeah. So, I mean, it, it would be a mixed message if we were writing something down, you know, from my point of view, little bit of this, little bit of that, sure like this stuff, I'm hesitant about this. I don't know that it'd be direct opposition, but it wouldn't be enthusiastic total support either. My thoughts.
So, yeah, my, uh, I was pretty optimistic about, or pretty supportive of this proposal, I think. Um, one, uh, go back to the track record that I think Redmond's had, I think they, they seem to have the ability to, to do good projects or do things that make their city clearly better. I don't feel like this is driven by developers as much as, as, uh, what appears to be in Bend. So I like that part about it. I do think that, um, this end of the, of Redmond will improve and I think it will, um, it'll tie into some increases in value for, for the county in general. It's also a smaller ask than what the, the City of Bend was. Um, I'm not sure what you were saying, if you didn't like the fire department or you did, I, or?
Fire Department sticks out as something that I'm not as supportive to see in an urban renewal plan.
Because they could do it themselves.
Yeah, I mean, a, a direct ask to the citizens, we've got a great reason to put it in here, and this is just half a step away from that, you know? It's still the citizens' tax base and, and it's not the total cost of it, it's just part of it, but still.
I did have one question on the proposal for them, it broke down like four categories of our tax money that was redirected, and one of them was Deschutes County specifically. And I wasn't clear why it was Deschutes County specifically, because I didn't think it was in the, the Bend one.
Oh, they were the same four districts in?
There were, the, the, in Bend, how much of it was just Bend or Deschutes County?
The tax rate for, uh, Deschutes County generally is pretty close to what it is for the countywide law enforcement district. So the, the cumulative impacts of the diversion is similar for the, the two, and they are the two largest.
I thought we'd get, you know, the, the positive of this for the county, and we didn't really get into this too much with the City of Bend because it was such a long-term project with unclear deals, but is that, that if you invest the money now, you can see it as the city overseeing our, the investment of our money to increase the tax base that will be, you know, for a long-term tax returns, which is what, I guess that's the positive side if it happens. It sounded, they did a good job of explaining how they've done that with their other urban renewal districts where they've taken X dollars and made it 10 times X of value, which increases our taxes when it's done. So I, I, I think they'd be, they would do this well, so I probably am supportive of it. I don't know if there's any, uh, I think they'll take what we say a little differently than the City of Bend did. I mean, City of Bend really didn't, um, listen to what we said and it was interesting and, when it's come up, came up in my debate yesterday and the, the question was, well, why, why do we even weigh in on it? Why does the city even weigh in on it? Or the county even weigh in on it? What business do you have in the City of?
I know, that's an interesting concept.
And I don't feel like Redmond will see us that way. So if we gave input, I think there's a chance they might listen to it or take it seriously, so.
Well, and then, so in a resolution is, you know, acknowledging that this is, however you want to word it, redirecting the tax rates of, of existing districts and services, uh, you know, for the, to spur development and add value. I mean, you know, it's a message to the citizens, so it's not even to the councilors at this point, it'd be more the worldview of why, why this would be supported, I guess.
Why we think we're doing our job for the taxpayers of Deschutes County.
Yeah, yeah.
Redirecting some of the tax money to this project.
I guess maybe that is the difference, you know? The previous one was trying to communicate with the city council saying this is huge and this is, you know, uh, whatever. And then this one's more speaking to the residents saying, you know, this is appropriate and this is going to be good, which is interesting, different audience almost, I'm thinking.
Maybe it's a different audience, but I feel that it, their track record is really quite outstanding. Um, they seem to have followed through on what they've set out to do in the past, and this is an area that clearly does need some serious dollars spent on it. I drive that area all the time and it, you know, I definitely feel that that's going to make Deschutes County look so much better if we can get, you know, 97, that area cleaned up. And then the other thing, I, I'm worried still about parts of our county that don't have fire coverage, such as McKenzie Canyon. And I know that McKenzie Canyon and I think it's Redmond Fire District Number Two, if they could come over or if Cloverdale, but somebody has got to, we've got to get more coverage in our county for some of those residents. So, you know, if they need a new fire station here, which they said is going to be so busy, then perhaps it'll, you know, take the pressure off the other ones. So I, I feel like the, um, the area definitely could be cleaned up and, um, you know, if they need to use some of our tax dollars, I feel confident that they will do, they'll be very frugal and very careful with how they, um, spend the money.
Well, yeah, so we're not opposed to it. Would we put a resolution together then, or do we want to put something in writing?
I think it's good to.
Yes.
Like a, a letter?
Like we did last time, or?
Or would you rather have a resolution or a letter?
Well, we did a resolution last time, didn't we?
Yes.
Yes.
Soon do a resolution.
I think so, a resolution.
Kind of official that way. The other thing I've heard about the urban rural district here that kind of bothered me is they're touting the affordable housing it's going to create and I just, you're taking an urban area and so you're building apartments or, you know, you're not, it's, it's not a great place for affordable housing in my mind, but they're touting it because they know it has, uh, I don't know, sex appeal, so to speak, or, you know?
And I've?
That's the, because it's really a tough, I mean, if we were just talking about more apartments, we've got hundreds of apartments being built now and, I don't know. I just think that's not a very good place to put affordable housing in the center of the city. I just don't know how that works.
Then they won't drive a car, they won't need.
That's all their theory, but, you know?
Well, where do you get a job though, too? I mean, you know, here's an apartment and it's very cost-effective. And then what? You know, I mean, if we're giving somebody housing but not the living opportunity to create wealth and the savings and?
Place for their parking and?
Right.
Trying to remake society.
So we would, yes, I, I would believe a resolution would be.
A resolution in support.
One, um, one possible consideration, if you recall in the resolution for Bend, we cited the pandemic and economic uncertainty. And in response, the City of Bend agreed to defer the first collection for, uh, the following year. So I don't know if that's something that you'd like to suggest for Redmond?
Well, that might be good because we're not through this yet.
Yeah.
I mean, the?
That's very timely, yeah.
The county, the, the state still doesn't know what they're going to give us and the feds could, yeah, I like that. The federal elections could be a whole variety of results.
So, uh, no position on the fire station?
I mean, I said my piece, we don't really, probably don't need to write it down.
How much was that? Because I asked him, wasn't it four million?
I think it was four, wasn't it?
I think that's what he said.
Right in there, yeah.
Yeah.
What's interesting is that, you know, that, uh, Fire, um, District is a separate entity from?
Yeah.
It's not part of city government, um, it's not even tied together like City of Bend is with Fire District Two, they are autonomous. But they, they do work together effectively, clearly like, you know, um, a, as an example in this, uh, proposed district, but they are, they are a, a separate organization with a separate governing board, um, from, uh, the City of Redmond, so just.
It might have been an incentive for the Fire District to not oppose it also, you know, kind of the community feel. Because if they're giving up taxes but also getting this, maybe that's, maybe we should ask for a sheriff's office up there or something.
I'm happy to reach out to them.
I'm joking, yeah.
Good point, no, that you're thinking, I like that.
Four million too, yeah.
Okay.
Well, uh, pro quo. But it's the fairgrounds, it's 19th Street, it's the, uh, large lot industrial job creation. I think there are benefits for the county that are built into this, the, the county residents for jobs, you know, hold the big picture.
Well, I can report that, uh, Redmond's doing a great job of running Juniper now. So even in the, um, COVID world, I think they're like really booked, the course is in fabulous shape and they've brought in, um, excellent management. So, you know, I know for a while Tom was making fun of me because the county doesn't own a golf course, but that one's looking better all the time.
All in favor? Oh, wait a minute, how'd that happen?
I'm kidding. Well, I'm just, I'm just happy to see that what they've done though, they've actually gone in and they've, like, hey, you know what, we're going to fix this.
Well, we heard at Central Oregon Visitor Association, uh, Golf Course Operator mentioned their numbers are up like 20%, uh, more than they've ever seen, you know, more rounds, uh, this summer than they've ever seen.
Because you couldn't, you know, it's like for a while you couldn't play in California, so everybody was coming up here to play golf.
Or, you know, just even going to play.
Yeah, or playing golf was one of the allowable exercises, so that was good. So, are, do you have enough direction on that, Tom?
I think so, I just, I'd invite Dave or Greg if you have any other questions or if you think we've got enough to prepare the resolution.
Well, Dave?
No, I, I heard what you all said, I'll work with Tom on putting something together.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, so now we have other items, um, and do you guys want to go back to the Bend Chamber? I actually did call Scott and had a conversation with Scott. He has a webinar today at 3:00. He should know for sure how much money by Friday?
Scott Cooper?
Yeah, no, no, Scotty Cock.
Okay, okay.
For that, you know, yes, Scott, sorry, Scotty Cock from COIC, um, there is a webinar today, so hopefully in the next couple of days, we're going to know how much is going to be pulled in for that grant program, which will be for the three counties. Um, the terms are going to be, as you mentioned, Commissioner Henderson, much more lenient with no match, so that's good. And, um, I've also just kind of checking with Annette to see if maybe our area could get more funding. So, and I think I have a call tomorrow with, um, Leo Horner, so I can mention there too that I would love to have the weight of Multnomah County, um, the scales kind of rebalanced and maybe we could get more funding for the grant program for the 242 businesses that they already have the applications for. So, uh, I do believe that that's important. So what, we have 284,000 here, the 150,000 above wasn't allocated. So what did you guys, you wanted to do like 250, is that what you were mentioning this morning?
Use the 150 and then?
Another 100?
Another 100 from down below.
So, that?
Yeah, that still works for me.
Okay, so, and then we may end up, we might be able to pull in even more money and we'll know in the next couple of days, so.
You know, it's inter, yeah.
Do we need a motion?
That isn't really us pulling in more money, it's really just what I, it's, they could pull in that money if they got lined up, is really, they could probably get the money directly, because I don't, COIC, the, you know, we did the first round and we didn't spend it all or, or allocate it all. So we did a second and they were kind of lukewarm about doing the next step because they really don't have the staff to do it, so they might want to just turn it over to this program or, or a part of it.
Well, Scott didn't say that today when I talked to him, he just said he knows the state has to have, get that out by the 15th of November. He sounded, um, you know, pretty involved, pretty excited about this. I mean, maybe I caught him at a good moment?
But yeah, like I said, I mean, I was on the committee, but, and, but I haven't even heard whether they re, how much they've gotten of the second part, how much has been allocated. So great if they could do it.
I said everything was completed so far, so, um, yes. So that's what I know. So do we need to have a vote on that for the 250? I know it's not much, it's only peanuts, but it's not, you know, it's, it's what we can do right at the moment, Katie. So Greg, do we need a motion or can we just say the 250?
I think just as long as the three of you agree, then we're good to go.
Actually, I think a, a motion would be great, then.
Yes.
Go ahead and prepare.
For the minutes?
You can go back and agree on what we voted, yeah.
Okay, could someone make a motion then?
I'd move that we allocate the 150,000 we have already allocated for business support grants and an additional $100,000 from the uncommitted balance of, this is all from CARES funding, to the, um, Ben, the Corona's, Corona Relief, uh, Ben, or Ben Next Business Resiliency Grants, Ben Next Business Resiliency Grants.
There we go, I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
About yes.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So hopefully we'll have more good news in the next couple of days. And, um, I think, Greg, that's good if we, so we still have some more money to allocate, but I think we should keep that for a little bit longer, just to be safe.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Very grateful, thank you, commissioners.
You know, one other, uh?
We'll put it to good use.
To, uh, to Katie, um, from working on the last round with the, uh, Business Oregon Grants, there's, you know, we split up the, um, different people worked with, uh, different communities, and so I was on the Bend and outside Bend area was my, where we decided, we looked at applications and talked about that. So one thing might be is that if this is a three-county allotment that COIC has, you might apply to do the Bend part of it, as opposed to COIC doing it independent from you. You become part of their, their facility to do it or something. I, I don't know if that would work together, but it might be a more streamlined way than you trying to, you know, have them do it for you to do it or whatever, so.
Yeah, I, I agree. Um, one of the constraints we have is that Business Oregon directed COIC to dispense the funds, so, but there might be some wiggle room in there, Commissioner. I think that's a really good suggestion and, and I'll certainly explore it more.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No, thanks, thanks, Katie. All right. Any other items? Monsieur Devan?
Uh, Facility Review Committee Recommendation, if you're ready for that.
Right here.
There you go. I even got my book too.
Okay. Are we going to do that now?
That's fine.
So, uh, we had a three-person team with Lee Randall, Eric Krapp and myself. Eric helped coordinate and I think Sharon helped coordinate the, the meetings. They were all Zoom meetings over a couple of days. Uh, and Eric put a memo together to kind of consolidate, uh, our recommendation. If you've been able to see that.
Okay. Have you seen a memo?
If you want to go.
Uh, the memo is actually just kind of an overview of the applicants. I just used that same format. And we interviewed, uh, 13 applicants. One person dropped out. We are recommending, uh, 10 at this point. And then there were two other architects. One of the 10 is an architect. And there are two other architects that were also strong, but we were a little bit concerned about having too many architects and not having a balanced committee.
Not sure how many architects in a room would make it.
One's a problem. Yeah, I, I'm glad you thought that way because I think, uh, yeah, they bring a perspective, but it's, it's some of these other perspectives that will look at it from a. You know, how are we spending money? Does that make sense? And that one can, you know, if you get too oversloped sided. Uh, this is kind of what I've said before about architects. They, they really don't buy things. They just design, they create.
Yeah, so it wasn't, it wasn't anything against architects. It was, but there were three very qualified.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a specific.
And you found one was that you thought was the, the most.
So which one of the architects are you recommending?
We are recommending Renee Alexander, who is the owner at BBT Architects.
Yeah, she was real enthusiastic.
Haven't met her, yeah.
And also, uh, they tend not to bid on county buildings or have not in the past. So that was a positive.
You say she's the owner or she's one of the owners?
Yeah, one of.
Is it a partner, right?
Yeah, one of the owners.
Yeah, cause I knew BB and T. Um, that sounds good. What, uh.
So can you give us some more names then?
Uh, so basically, uh, I, yeah, I'll just go down. I said, remember we're recommending 10, so then 11 with one of the architects, is that the number?
No, the 10 includes Renee.
Yeah, okay. So the 10 people we're recommending. So John Fisher, uh, I'm just going to go down the list here.
John Fisher, yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then who?
David Queros.
Yeah, he's a good, he's a good choice. He's been involved that a lot. I know him.
I think he mentioned something about insulating your house in the.
That's right. Back in the day.
Yep, we got some stor, we got some good stories.
Good, yeah, that's right. I've known him for a long time. I haven't seen him for quite a while, but yeah, that's, he'll, he'll bring a lot of thought to it. Cause he's worked at so many different aspects of construction.
Yeah, he has a great back.
Yep, yep.
He said he's. He's retired a week after that.
What's that? Yeah, I know. It was, it was fiberglass insulation in the crawl space.
Yep. Uh, so Arlene Gibson.
So this one I was, I didn't really see what the draw was from her, for her to this. Being a lawyer is not really too helpful. And then the nonprofit part.
Uh, everybody started off with, you know, we asked why, why did you apply for this position? You know, what do you bring? Why do you, why did you apply? Every one of them said, just community service. We love where we live. We want to help, want to participate. It's something I can offer. So then Arlene definitely is not a construction person, but, uh, there's a subset of people here when we talked about the, uh, recommendations. Why wouldn't we put everybody that wants to be, that are just community partners, uh, get them up to speed, hear the construction people talk, and then be advocates for these projects that we're going to decide what we're doing. So, yeah, I mean, you're, you're thinking, what are the qualifications? I was thinking, man, if she, you know, people like that want to be on here, that may be a great fit.
She really had a good tie to the community.
Yeah.
What is, I see that it's unity.
Yeah, so that's Challenge Day projects from way back. Uh, I've, I've known him for way back, uh, her and some other board members. Challenge Day is in the schools and it's a kind of anti-bullying and, uh, uh, you know, life, uh, skill day that they, they do. So it's a nonprofit. We've donated to them as the, the county's quarterly funds. So that's one of her things. She is a, a lawyer. But, and I don't know that she's practicing right now, uh, but she does do, yeah, community outreach efforts and, uh. Yeah, she really wanted to be involved. So I've known her, uh, but this was good to be able to, uh, interview her.
Okay.
But as I say, that was kind of a catch-all position. Hey, if a community member like this wants to be on, why not? Was my thought.
As we'll see, I mean, I don't, I'm not going to object too hard. I just, I, my goal really with the committee is more to just have people that really can bring some facet of knowledge to projects. And if you've never built anything, you're really, and maybe she's built her own house. But even if you haven't built your own house, you don't, most, people that haven't done that don't really know what we're talking about.
But I think there's probably four of them on here like that. You know, this is the first one.
I just read something about having an effective group and it was talking about nonprofits that actually can last for five years. And one of the things, it said to have a five to seven board. So what are we talking? We're talking 10 now?
Yeah, we started out sep, we started out targeting seven to 10.
Well, this is a sounding board for projects that the county's aiming towards and committing to.
Well, I see it more than a sounding board. I see it as a thinking board, as a, um, really bringing some thought to projects. Uh, not just, here's an idea. Do you like the way it sounds? But here's an idea, do something with it.
Well, remember our.
What I'm looking for, like our fire board.
Remember our fire board was so divided that they had two different votes.
Well, that's, yeah, it was all right with me though, because I think that reflected the conflict between people in the house, housing business, real estate business and the fire business. And so that's a real split. I don't know if there's a split in this business.
Right.
This is not really split the same way.
So who's the next?
Now, the question about, I, I do follow up with your que, your idea though, that maybe 10's too many for, I, I think a smaller could be better.
Well, I just think of, I went to a homeless meeting and I think there must've been 50 people. This was before COVID. And I remember JW going up to the front of the room and saying, this, this group is just too big to get something done, you know?
Yeah, that's like the.
You've got all these.
Shelter. That's what we went to last year for that was 40.
So I, I mean, I, I did remember that he did go up and say that to the group.
So Connor Carlson, uh, but he's in that same category. So he's a, you know, medical experience. Um, he grew up in Bend. Lot of connections in the medical field. Uh, I think he said.
Was that Dr. Carlson's son?
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe he, did he say his dad was a?
Yeah, he said his dad is or was an orthopedic surgeon.
Yeah, he's a huge deal. He did my knees.
But same thing. I mean, he came in so excited, like, man, I just want to give back and I think I can offer.
And something like that though, with his background and tech, technology stuff, that seemed to fit a little better than the one before that, in my mind was that, you know, he might have a perspective. And, uh, the, being rooted here is interesting. And his dad was, you know, he was the physician for the Olympic team one, one year.
You mean like the mayor's?
Dr. Carlson.
Dr. Carlson.
I don't know, yeah.
So who's next?
So, uh, so.
Jeff Milstead.
Terry Milstead, yep.
Does he work now or?
He, well, so he's still, still doing some projects. So you must know who he is. I had to, you know, meet him and learn about him. But, uh, yeah, uh. He, he's the, the old timer, big picture, been around the state. All the contractors, uh, know him. So, yeah. He'd be the one to have on here. Uh, owner's representative is his primary job that he's always done, school districts, big private projects. He was asked to, you know, come join us if possible. So he was mentioned that somebody called him to ask if he to do this. So, um, yeah.
Someone of us called him or?
Uh, Lee, Lee Randall. So, yeah, he suggests, as I say, ended up with these 10. So then, uh, next one is Renee Alexander.
Yes.
No, I'm trying to make sure.
So what, okay, so then we go to number 10?
Yeah, Mark Kelly, yep.
Is he on the list?
Oh, yeah. So Mark Kelly.
And this, another one was a disconnect, this is a lawyer from San Francisco that must have a house here.
Yeah.
He, uh, he and his wife bought a house in Sisters and they'll be, uh, he's retiring and will, will be moving there. And his law practice is working with school districts on school bonds and school projects. And, uh, he has a, a wealth of knowledge and experience.
Oh, he's a practicing construction lawyer. Well, that'd be interesting. Now, see a lawyer with that background could have a lot of, uh, cause he'll, he'll say, yeah, we had a case like this, we built it out of this and it didn't work.
And also he has a lot of experience on, on the different types of contracting. You know, we talked about design, build versus construct, um, CG, CMGC. So that'd be helpful as well.
What about the person above him, uh, that has the, kind of like, it looked to me like he was, uh, experienced in excavation, which is a real fundamental part of all projects. And, and also as a contractor, you'd have thought about what things cost and.
Yeah, he, he's actually moving here. And then, I mean, he, he did have that experience that others didn't, but it was, it was on a much scar, smaller scale in terms of, of the work.
Yeah, I mean, he's.
But he's an OIT graduate. That's good. Out of Clamath Falls.
Right.
And he's looking to make connections in Central Oregon. So he's just coming here right now.
I'd put him as an alternate or something. I'd like to keep him in the mix. Cause I, he would bring practical knowledge to how, if excavation is such a fundamental thing. If he's actually done it and to have an OIT degree and, and civil engineering is good. And then become an excavator.
He doesn't have a degree.
Oh, he just went there. I see what you're saying.
Okay, but I do agree with you. He has practical experience.
Grew up in Gresham.
Okay, so then, um, what about Mark then?
Yeah, we said yes.
Mark?
Uh, or no, Mark.
Appleby?
That's what we were just talking about.
We were talking about Jeff and then we'd already talked about Mark Kelly.
So this is another architect that you didn't want?
Uh, so let's be clear. So, yeah, Commissioner Henderson, jump back to Jeffrey Tidman. We were talking about Mark Kelly. And who are you asking about now?
Eleven.
Matthew Appleby?
Yeah, so that was one of the architect pool. So as I say, we selected Renee.
So you felt Renee was the strongest of the three for what we're doing for now?
And then the next page, uh, Bill Anderson.
He said BBT. Where was she at?
Same, same firm.
What, uh, so I wouldn't mind having a, somebody to keep in the loop or an alternate of another architect if we wanted to keep somebody in the loop about it. Cause they might be able to see issues with other architect. I mean, there's a value to having an architect. And Bill Anderson was somebody I suggested because I was thinking about it from one of the discussions I had with him actually, but. Just the banker and he's done projects running.
All three.
And he also mentioned the tie-in to the budget committee in terms of his knowledge on the budget committee. And then also he felt that it would be helpful for him to learn more about county projects that would.
Yeah.
Complement his role on the budget committee.
But I think just standalone, it'll be valuable because he, uh, has done projects, financed projects.
Yes.
It's a pretty practical, what's something cost and.
He also pointed out in the interview, interview that Mid-Oregon has branches throughout the county. So that's another knowledge base that he brings.
Yep.
And then Mark Nisha, uh, retired from Skanska, 30 years, has built buildings all around, I think the country. Uh, so all kinds of big projects and, uh, yeah, just offering, you know, project management, site superintendent experience, all kinds of good stuff.
Was he another one recruited by Lee or?
Who am I missing?
Yes.
Yeah, Lee did make a call to him.
So he's recruited two of the people or did he recruit one of the architects too?
Those are the two that I remember that.
I'm missing one person. You said 10 people you have?
Al Dirtinger's the next one.
No, I have those, the last three. I, I have the three on the second page. So.
Number, number seven withdrew. Jennifer Whelan.
She withdrew, yes.
Yeah.
So the names are Fisher, Queros, Gibson, Car, Carlson, Milstead, Alexander, Kelly, Anderson, Nisha and Dirtinger.
That's, I would agree, yep.
Well, I did, that's good that we have a couple of experienced, longtime builders, but I. I don't want to stack it with people that are just going to agree with Lee. I guess I'll be blunt because I, um, so I don't know specifically if they do, but I, um, I'm trying to get beyond, I mean, some of the budgets and expenses on some of these things. I want to, I want to look at that thinking. So I want to make sure we have a broad breadth of thinking on this stuff.
So.
And I don't want 30-year veterans of commercial building and saying, well, this is the way we got to do it. Because unless they've, you know, and I'm not saying they do, I just don't want, I personally don't want that as a goal of this committee. That's the one reason we're setting it up is to think outside the box a little bit, so.
And Mark Rossi, number five, um, he's not on the list because he is an architect. Is that what the story is?
So out of, out of three architects, we selected one. And he's the other one we did not.
Montana State.
Oh, and all three of them, I mean, everybody we interviewed is very excited, honored and ready to give back. So it's, you know, it's just a good opportunity for us to put a team together.
Okey dokey.
Two, two of the architects both went to Montana State.
Well, that's one of the top schools in Montana.
No, I just was wondering if they're friends maybe. They're, they weren't the ones we picked, but it's kind of interesting that all the architecture schools there are.
So this brings us to a concept though. I mean, uh, I, this committee would meet, you know, quarterly or something, it was the idea maybe. And, and throw around some ideas about what the county's thinking and the scope and scale, maybe a budget estimate. Does that sound right for the size of what we're building? Or should we build new or lease? Uh, you know, it's just some of those big high level items. Uh, Commissioner Henderson, if you're thinking that they're going to dive down, sharpen their pencils, provide professional services in this committee, I mean, that, we got to get clear on what we're asking them to do.
Well, it'd be the same kind of professional services that I'd throw out that when I look at a set of plans or a budget, I, you know, I think that they would be thinking business-wise, does this make sense? And that's kind of the goal. And what, what ideas? They're not here to be representing the taxpayers as to whether we need this or that. That's really our policy. That's, you know, how could we do this effectively? Well, like, you know, examples would be just the ones we've done, like the stabilization center. We're remodeling a 4,500 square foot building. We're going to spend $2 million doing it? I mean, that was not, I mean, we overrode that, but that should have been a lot easier than that. I mean, $2 million, you could build a 4,500 square, I mean, you can build a beautiful place of something. And so it's just that kind of thing, um, is what I think they should be somewhat. So it's not, I guess in a way they're sharpening their pencils because they would do like, like when the, with, I'll give you another example for old probation. So we, we got a budget for business buildings and then there was things missing in the budgets. There was things that weren't clear. So it took like three renditions to get the final kind of estimates. And that, that would be something that these kind of people would see. And they'd say, well, wait, what am, is it, like there, there's a million dollars in one of those proposals of soft costs. You know, 15, 18% of the building is soft, you know, stuff that we would ask, instead of us doing it as a board, uh.
Well, so that's my thought is how much authority are we in? How much?
They're going to us ideas. They're not giving it, we're not really given authority. We're just asking them to look at this stuff and think about it. That's what I wanted.
Set of plans sent to them before a meeting or, or they sit at a meeting and have something presented?
They could have a set of plans. Some of these people know a lot about this.
Some people will know what they're looking at. And then there's a few that I'm not sure.
Do you think it's too many, Patty?
Oh, yeah, I, I, I do. Um, cause I do like, I don't want to get two camps of feedback. Um, you know. It's, it's easy, the bigger the table, getting around it, the harder it is to get some answers.
Well, another thing, if it's too big is that the, the bigger committee, the less ownership you have in the result. So if you're in a 40, like you said, a 40-person committee, you don't own it because. So if you're in a 40, like you said, a 40-person committee, you don't own it because you're like, well, they own it. But if you're in a three-person committee, you kind of own it, you know, because there's a part of, you know, you have a big stake in it, so...
Well, uh...
That'd be something to think about is remove, you know, having it eight instead of 10, figuring out who not to...
Well, you wanted to have an alternate for architect and you asked Jeffrey Tiedman.
Oh, I, I had a, yeah.
So that's...
But those are just alternates. I'm just, people to keep in the loop. I, I'm pretty happy with the results we got.
Yeah, great. Very, very ready to go.
What we got, way better than where we started and sometimes...
So these would be public meetings when we had a committee.
Yeah, it's advisory, this is an advisory committee to the board, so it would be a public meeting.
Right.
Well, Commissioner Henderson, would you attend one of these or communicate with each person or just want to see a result on paper from?
I might attend a meeting. I might talk about something that we want. Mrs. Board is, is, this committee is to help us as a board, is what I view this as.
Yeah, well...
Any of us could attend a meeting and say, I've got a problem with this. Do you, what, it'd be somebody we try to use as a, to broaden our understanding of something or, or get feedback. Instead of, you know, just relying on what one or two of us says, we should, maybe we'll have a body of people that kind of say, hey, we've looked at it too and we think you're, you know, you know, Henderson, we should have spent $2 million on that 4,500-square-foot building.
Well, and I think of it like that, as in, okay, we have a need. We need, you know, a parole and probation home, a court remodel, health, uh, expansion in Redmond or whatever we're going to do. So that's, that's the item, right? There's one item like that. We have X amount of personnel. How many square feet do we need and what's, what's the number X, you know? So that's the first step into it. And then it's, what, are we going to build a building? Do we need to buy land? What's the cost? What's the infrastructure? Are we building, you know, one story or two? Are we going to build a concrete structure? Do we have to build a parking garage? You know, that's the, what I see for this committee is some of that specific stuff. But we have, you know, uh, project management staff and we can contract with architects to do that too. So I, and this isn't my domain. I'm just thinking it through. What are we, what are we expecting from the committee?
My feeling is, is that, um, to be blunt, is I've had to bring up things that I thought project management staff should have brought up. So I don't want to do that on every project. That's not really, I'm a county commissioner, not a builder now, so, but, and then, um, so I, I like that. And as I've said multiple times, I think architects are the least knowledgeable about what things cost because they don't actually pay for it. They just draw it. And I never ask an architect what things cost. I mean, they never, the people that know what it costs are the people that build things and say, well, I've tried to get better pricing on such and such multiple times and I can't. Or, yeah, I might be able, there was an angle we might be able to do that would be better than this. Or space usage, like an architect does it for the, I mean, I'm getting away into the theory of houses and buildings, but they look at the, you know, the ambiance and the spaces and all the stuff, but they don't say, well, how could we cut 20% out of this to get it down to 4 million? You know, what 40, what's the least relevant for 20% of this building that we can save?
Well, so...
So I'm just, and that's why we want, I feel like we need a committee like this would be helpful to us. Because I think we're going to have a number of projects going forward. We've had several come up. You know, we had this 10, this $6 million we're going to spend on the 10,000-square-foot at the fairgrounds. You know, that, that's another one that we could have talked about some more too as a committee. We had, I'm not sure who actually did the proposal on that, but...
What, what is that? The?
The, the 10,000-square-foot, no, and the addition of Sisters Buildings to become a conference center, you know. I'm hoping, hopeful this kind of a committee will do all those things. They'll be helpful to all of us to, because they're practical people and they get common sense. I just think it's going to be a great working benefit to all of us.
Practical people.
So when you, when you, so that, that kind of makes me want to kind of reverse engineer this building that we're in now. You know, is this, that'd be an interesting conversation for me to learn, as in, as I say, I'm, I'm trying to learn about the scope of what you're even thinking here. How much we spent on it and it's a ti, and a point in time, because that was the costing, the cost of building. Is this the style of a building, if we were to build something new that is appropriate for government?
I've been told by people, this is one of the ugliest buildings in Deschutes County.
But then that brings you back to an architect.
No, but there are things that you can do that are beautiful, that really aren't expensive. But I mean, somebody brought me here one day and they said, oh, my gosh, this is like, and I went like, oh, well, thank you.
We should remodel the great courthouse and put our building, our offices upstairs.
Courthouse is going to be more of a showpiece than the adult parole and probation building is.
Yes.
One group of people go to the courthouse, the entire public, it's, it's like a landmark. Other buildings aren't as much, but, but, yeah, so I'd reverse engineer this. I'd say, why are the hallways so wide everywhere? And how many square feet are those? Now, they may have got a great deal building this and they're building it for a 50-year future. And we have three times as many people working here or something. I don't know why. But that's a question I'd ask. This isn't a very feel-good. Those, those stairwells are awful from a feel-good standpoint. They're these big cavernous, they didn't lower any ceilings, they didn't, there's things like that that are...
Well, but that's interesting. You both mentioned an architectural type thing that's wrong.
Well, I don't know what it costs. See, I don't know what it costs.
Yeah, I don't either. I'm just saying, that's, that's interesting.
But from a cost standpoint, I don't know. But there's things like that that you see if you, you look at things like this.
Well, you just even drive to the courthouse now and you'll see that they have a, a rock thing on the wall. It's on the diagonal. It's really done with some thought and, and it's really kind of pretty to look at, you know? And remember, we had like the ugliest baskets in front of this building last year. Now, this year it's COVID and I feel like, you know, I'm not going to say anything about making those flower baskets.
But next year?
But they, yeah, it's, it's like...
I'm just going to say, this is home and I, I love it the way it is.
I brought in my soap for the bathroom all my day.
So this is, this is great conversation because I, you know, I was making sure we're on the same page, what we expected.
But this was done, I think, as a unique opportunity of, I, I think somebody built it and then we bought it or, I don't know. There was somebody who, it was done differently. I don't, but I don't know who planned it or...
But Jerry is my neighbor, so...
Who, Jerry?
Jerry Milstead. Lives right down the street from me.
Well, do you want to think for another, until next week about this issue of less than 10? I mean, I'm wanting to think about that.
Well, I'm not opposed to that. I mean, so you, but I'm telling, you know, I explained why we, we're like, okay, well, very qualified people, not multiple architects, and then the folks that are just kind of like, hey, I just wanted to, why not invite them to, so, you know, that was just an invitation to getting it up there, so...
I think, I want, I want these people actually to feel like they are part of the group and, you know, you have to wait till nine people speak. It might be, you know, like after a while, you're just going to go, well, really? So, I, I don't know. I, I'd like to wait. If we could make a determination on Monday.
Talk to the people. Thanks for doing the work. Great job. Great job, Eric.
Thank you for our binders.
Yeah, the binders really help. It's good to hear what the thinking was on everything.
Uh, next Monday and under other items?
That'd be great.
Great.
Monday?
I have one other, other item real quick. Um, so it was brought up to me, I was doing an interview about, um, I don't think I've said this. If I've said it, I'm repeating myself, but I can't, I've told several people about this, but I don't know if I've said it at a committee, at a board meeting. One of the impacts from the fires in the McKenzie and Saniam Canyons is it's now, did I already say this? Hard, yeah, I think maybe I did. Hard to get to Sisters in West County. And what can we do to help? The only way you can get there now is go through Spring, Sweet Home and and that, which is, I just drove that again this weekend and it's, you know, it's an awful road, basically. It's, nobody likes to drive it. It's very direct, but it's, so, uh, I don't know if there's some way through COVID or what we could do to, um, because that's going to be a challenge to Sisters' economy this fall and winter because they're, it's hard to get there now. You know, you're not going to go 58 to go to Sisters, but you either have to drive from Eugene to, and get on, uh, 20 or you got to go from Salem, get a, I don't know whether COVID's talked about this at all, about, you know, promoting Sisters, getting people to Sisters, but those roads in, in the McKenzie and the Saniam are going to be closed for months, possibly.
Really for months?
That's what they say, possibly.
COVID typically isn't that, uh, surgical, how they market specific areas. Um, they've got, you know, big clients there with Blackbeet Ranch and, um, you know, and some of the, you know, the vacation homes that are represented in that area. But I have not seen them typically focus in on an area like that. I, I, were you thinking in terms of, you know, marketing, uh, an alternative way to get there or?
Well, I didn't really know. Just anything to help Sisters was brought up because they had, you know, they had the COVID slowdown. They had a good summer and, um, I was talking to somebody at the newspaper, and they had a good summer, but then with the smoke and now with these fires, the result of the fires, they're not going to have much traffic for months. That's what they're worried about and what, yeah, so what could, and I don't know if COVID was the right organization to help, but I was just, I know you're on it and Tony's on it. Is there anything that? Because they've had tough times. I mean, they've canceled the Folk Festival two years ago too with the smoke and they've...
At least they got 198,000 from the cultural.
Yeah, apparently that's about half of what they...
Right. But that's better, a lot of other places.
But marketing is a tricky deal right now. If you market, some people don't want marketing to happen and they don't want people to move around because of COVID. So we got to make sure we're real clear about what we're...
Well, I'm clear that I want, I feel we should, I'm not like that about tourism. I think tourism keeps a lot of businesses going and...
So we had our COVID update today and, you know, that's part of it though, people moving around.
Maybe. I know, but I'm just saying, uh, these, these businesses are going to be on the, on the ropes here.
But COVID is very professional. Uh, to, to bring a, an idea like this, uh, they've got, you know, their marketing people and their brainstorm and, you know, the state agency, this, uh, state, uh, um, Visitors Association. I think, I mean, just by you mentioning it today, I'll bring it to, you know, yeah, yep.
I guess that's what I'm doing, or is there something the county could do?
I'll, I'll talk to Judy Trigo and see what the chamber is like, wanting help.
Let's have those guys have a conversation, yeah.
It's brought to my attention. I was thinking, no, I never thought about that, that they're going to have trouble getting there. And I've been driven over the mountains. It wasn't that much traffic. I thought that Highway 20 would be a lot more traffic on a Friday afternoon and a Monday. I thought there'd be, oh, so there aren't many people coming from the valley over here to that side of the county. They may come in 58 if they're wanting to get to Bend or if they're from Portland, they may be coming, you know...
I know that most of summer, Sisters was slammed.
That's what, yeah, that's what he said.
It was incredible. Um...
It was good, yeah.
Yes, it was excellent.
Made up for a lot of, you know, down here.
And then I knew people that were trying to come in town and then all the fires happened. So, on the 7th, so that kind of messed up. You know, and then now it's, you know, what is it?
It'll be a month now.
It's, it's permanently messed. So, okay, I'll call Judy and see what, what she, um, would like some help with.
Okay, thanks.
And I called Julia Tyson and just about the idea of, you know, what, what's appropriate marketing or, or planning for right now at this time.
Okay.
I know, I know. I'm trying to think. How can we get people to who do? Um, helicopter them in? Go skiing?
Yeah.
What is it?
Come in from Bend.
Well, we have a record amount of snowflow. We'll have to see. I'm not sure what the Five Pines numbers were for the year, but I think they were pretty good. Okay. Commissioner Devon, did you have anything else additional? Okay, all right. So I believe now we, Tom.
Um, I think Whitney was hoping to get a couple minutes to pin you down on the state of the county presentations.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Whitney.
Thank you.
Oh, that's nice. You have them jointly.
Yes, so Commissioners, we talked a few weeks ago about, um, committing to a date for a virtual state of the county presentation with the Bend Chamber. And that'll be on Tuesday, October 27th. And at that meeting, the board expressed an interest in seeing if other local chambers were interested in, um, pursuing events following a similar model because we kind of are out of our normal, um, rhythm of when these events happen. And so I reached out to the Redmond and Sisters and Lapine Chambers and, um, it looks like Redmond and Sisters are both interested in hosting a joint virtual event, um, on Friday, October 23rd. And they were tentatively thinking that that event might be held over the lunch hour. Um, and then the Lapine Chamber is interested in looking at an event date that's later in the year. But I wanted to come back to you and let you know that it looks like the Sisters and Redmond Chambers are interested in that date to see if that might work, um, so that we might be able to confirm with them and they can begin promoting it to their membership. Um, I'm certainly happy to explore other dates if that one doesn't appear to be a good fit. Um, and then kind of in preparation for both events, I've prepared, just as a, a framework, kind of a draft content outline that I was hoping to briefly, um, I can either walk through it with you today or circle back around with you at a later date. But I'm hoping that by looking at the content outline early, we, that will inform kind of the slides for the presentation and topics that you might want to cover. And I'm certainly happy to capture other items that might not be, um, included in this list. So I don't know if the board's preference would be, um, to walk through the content outline and/or if we know, um, if that date on October 23rd might work. Those were kind of the two things I was hoping to get.
Dates work for me. I just checked my calendar.
Okay.
Excuse me. It worked for me as far as I know, yeah.
Okay, we'll get that on the calendar and we'll confirm that. Commissioner Dara, I missed you.
I'm sure it's fine. I'm sure I have nothing else.
Okay, um, we'll go ahead and confirm that. And if anything else crops up, feel free to let me know. And then as far as content for the presentations, do you want to walk through that one today or would you prefer to do that at a later date?
Well, a later date might be okay.
Okay.
Do you think?
That's fine.
Okay with me too.
I can put this maybe on the, on your formal agenda for next week and maybe we'll walk through it then at that time. And in the meantime, if ideas come up and you have feedback, feel free to let me know and I can update this in advance of that meeting.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, and they're at noon, so...
Right.
All right. And they're already on my schedule.
Good. That's fantastic. We just want to confirm.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Somebody was doing their job.
Oh, they're at noon. I better check.
Okay. Thank you, Whitney. Oh, Whitney, and you saw where we had, what, 14 today? I take every number and divide it in half and that's kind of bad. Okay.
We need to divide it in half.
Because it's, you know, the week number gets divided in half per 100,000. So if we need to be 10 and we're at 14, so that's 7, so that means we're going to be over 10.
Oh, yeah.
I just, a little...
Oh, the week number.
Yeah, the...
The W E, W E E K.
W E E K number, yes.
The W E A K number.
Not, yeah, no, it's the W E E K number. So, okay, so are we good now to take a, we need to go to executive, so we will take a five-minute break? All right. Uh, we need to go to, um, Labor Negotiations D.
Thanks for the map. I love the, just play map.
Good luck and we'll see what happens. When do you do that? Is it, was it next week?
No, she'll just email.
Okay, email tomorrow. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we need, we're going to come back in so I can adjourn? Okay, we're in now and we will be adjourning our meeting. Uh, thank you very much for joining us today, September 30th. Thank you.